Yeah, I said I gotta get cleaned up for the chair, but you said something after that.
No, I said we couldn't hear you. No, we couldn't hear you because you were around me. I was laughing. I was just laughing because it looked like you were definitely yelling at me on the screen.
I was. It's always best to do that with the mute button.
It looked really satisfying though. Chairman MacArthur, good morning. I'm gonna mute myself now, pardon me.
And Chairman MacArthur, I had sent you a list of all the public comments, folks who have signed up for our agenda item two. And I just have a note that Jerry, perhaps Jerry should speak first.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Let's do that.
Okay, thank you.
And I did this, so thanks for that.
Great. Okay, and Commissioner Leelak will be joining us. He is on vacation, but he will be joining us remotely. I don't see him just yet, but we still have a few more minutes.
Yeah, I spoke with him last night and he said he already tested his internet. He has good internet, so he's ready to go.
That would mean he's not sufficiently on vacation if he has internet.
He's, well, yeah, that's probably true, but he was really kind to give us the three hours this morning, given the fact that he has a precious week with his family.
He's making the rest of us look bad, those of us that really took vacation.
No, not really. You get to have vacation too.
Well, I will just add that I have a brick wall coming down inside of my house today, so I'm gonna try really hard to mute when I'm not talking because there are bricks hitting the floor, literally.
I hope it's intentional, Katie.
Yeah. It is intentional unless I hear screaming, then I might leave, but we have an old brick fireplace that has since been replaced with gas. But, you know, the wall still came out six feet with brick, and so we were removing the wall and making more kitchen space. But one of those projects that, you know, only a pandemic can make you do.
You are our Cascadia early warning system, so let us know if it's something else.
I will, yeah.
Commissioner Halova came off sabbatical. Good morning.
Morning.
Christian Warren's on, awesome.
Good morning, everyone.
A. I see Ethan is on, which is great. Staff team is on.
Since the time is 8:29 and we do have a quorum, I, Chairman MacArthur, would you like to begin? And or shall we wait for Commissioner Leelak?
I think we could start. You do your piece, Esther. I think that perhaps he will be plugging in.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, the time is 8:30, and so I will be starting the webinar. Okay. Good morning, commissioners and members of the public. My name is Esther Johnson, and I am the commission assistant. Welcome to the December 9, 2020 LCDC special meeting. The meeting is being recorded and is available for live streaming through Granicus. The link is available on our meeting page. If you intend to provide public comment or testimony, please rename yourself with some sort of identifying title related to your organization. If you intend to testify, please sign up using the public signup form on our meeting materials website so that we have your name in the queue. Participants will be in listen-only mode until they are called on to testify. We will be calling on individuals and unmuting your microphone during the public comment slash testimony during the agenda item. There will be a slight pause as you are switched over to the panelist mode. If you are on the phone and would like to testify and you didn't sign up in advance, you can press star nine, and that will notify me and add you to the queue. Thank you. And with that, I would like to introduce Chair Robin MacArthur.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I appreciate that. Good morning, everybody. I'm Robin MacArthur. I'm the Chair of the Land Conservation and Development Commission, and I'm gabbling into today's special meeting of the commission today. As Esther said, is Wednesday, December 9, 2020, and I am really pleased to be here. And I'm offering welcome to everybody that's on that can hear us. I also want to acknowledge that we're meeting in the middle of a holiday season. And for those of you that don't know me, I love the holidays even this year. And I thought I would impart a little bit of holiday cheer on you all. And so I also, I want to just encourage everyone to celebrate yourselves during this holiday season, to celebrate your friends and family, and do that in any way that works for you. So, and because I don't think I can probably have this on the entire commission meeting, and probably that's a good thing, I'll remove it and ask Ms. Johnson to call the role.
Before she does that, I hope somebody got a screenshot.
You may need to put it back on really quickly for us.
I will do that just.
Who's on it? Who's on the picture?
Yes.
Hold there for a moment. Sorry, Commissioner, oh geez, we'll have to get it later, I think. After a photo shoot, after a photo shoot.
It just was really disrespectful here, so not to get a photo, but thank you. So, Ms. Johnson, do you want to call the role?
So, yes. Commissioner Halova.
Here.
Commissioner Sandoval.
Here.
Commissioner Warren.
Here.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Here.
Vice Chair Peramine.
Here.
Chair MacArthur.
Here.
And Commissioner Leelak.
Here.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for joining. Great. So then we have a couple of house, so everyone is here and accounted for. And just a couple of housekeeping matters before we go into our very important agenda item of housing. I want to remind folks that you received an electronic scorecard to make it really easy for you. And I encourage you after the meeting to fill it out and send it back to Esther so that staff get some feedback on how the meeting went. And they use that information to improve or give themselves pats on the back for us when they do a great job, which they normally do, but it's really helpful to have that direct feedback. We now want, oh, approving the agenda, I think, first, and then we'll go and do the land acknowledgement. So there are just a couple of changes on the agenda for today. Esther sent out a revised agenda, I think, a couple of days ago. And just for the audience, we will still have the, we'll still have the housing issue first. Item number two will be the next item up. But because last week the Governor Brown issued her recommended budget, I asked Jim at the end of this meeting to give us an update on what that budget, her recommended budget, what those recommendations mean to the department. And so I've asked him to speak about that, and so that'll be agenda item number three. And that means we'll put the public comment on non-agenda items at the very end of the meeting, and that'll be agenda item number four. And so with those changes, I'm hoping that one of my colleagues can offer up a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move that we approve the agenda as stated by Chairman MacArthur.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. So, Ms. Johnson, would you call the role?
Commissioner Sandoval.
Hi.
Commissioner Warren.
Hi.
Commissioner Leelak.
Hi.
Commissioner Halova.
Hi.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Hi.
Vice Chair Peramine.
Hi.
Chair MacArthur.
Hi. Blessed unanimously with everyone present. Thank you. Oh, land acknowledgement. Are you able to put that on the screen for us? And I'm, I'm happy to read it, but I'm also open to one of my colleagues reading it as well. Anyone interested? I guess I'm hearing none. I will go ahead. So we want to acknowledge, I'd like to acknowledge, we'd like to acknowledge the many tribes and bands who call Oregon their ancestral territory and honor the ongoing relationship between the land, plants, animals, and people indigenous to this place we now call Oregon. We recognize the continued sovereignty of the nine federally recognized tribes who have ties to this place and thank them for continuing to teach us how we might all be here together. Great, thank you. I don't think we have anything else on agenda item number one. So let's go right into the main event, agenda item number two. And as staff is getting kind of set up and organized for that, I guess I'd like to say a few things to kind of frame the topic today. First of all, I want to thank all participants who have been involved in this effort for your energy, passion, intent, and diligent participation in this effort. You really all have made a contribution to help us get to this point today. I also want to thank my fellow commissioners for being willing to meet in this special session today. A lot of you had other plans originally. I know some are zooming in from vacation, some are in the middle of a move, others are dealing with family issues and, and job changes. So I really appreciate your attention and willingness to be here today to adopt this rule. To sort of frame the discussion, I believe our goal today in this rulemaking effort is to adopt a rule that does way more than just planning and policy and is way more than just good intent. We were really poised to adopt a rule that is implementable, that can happen on the ground and can result in increased housing supply and housing choice. And it's not surprising, I guess, when I looked over the list of issues again last evening, the remaining issues that we're grappling with are issues dealing with implementation, master plan communities, infrastructure, and citing and design standards. All those things are about how do we package everything to make it work on the ground? And because implementation requires really strong partnerships between the state and local governments and between developers, housing advocates, builders, we were incumbent on this commission to craft a rule that understands all those perspectives and actually results in housing, increased housing choice and housing supply. So with that frame, I wanted to make sure I thought through it that way. We're not really focusing on any one perspective. We're trying to bring all those perspectives together to make sure we can actually result, this rule can actually result in houses and housing units. So with that frame, I will turn it over to staff to help us understand the most current version of the draft rule.
Thank you, Chairman MacArthur. Hello. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Ethan Stockmeyer. I'm the Senior Housing Planner at DLCD. And with me today during this presentation is Robert Mantalillo, who's a housing planner and is the lead on the Model Code Technical Advisory Committee work. Thank you, Chair, for, you know, setting that frame, and I think it's very important as we kind of join or come to this third hearing of the Large Cities Middle Housing Model Code and Associated Rules, Oregon Administrative Rules. So in November, during that meeting, during that public hearing, the commission directed staff to hold a special meeting of the Rulemaking Advisory Committee and the Model Code Technical Advisory Committee to discuss kind of three, three different pieces or provisions in the rules that were left unresolved after the end of that November meeting and just needed a little bit more refinement, further discussion by the various stakeholders. As a result of that meeting that took place on November 24th, staff have provided in your staff report a series of recommendations for those three remaining items. And we feel that with the recommendations that we're providing in the staff report, while they may not be perfect, and I think you'll hear quite a bit from various stakeholders in the public comment portion of this meeting today, I think what you'll see is that the rules are implementable. They're clear, they're actionable, set of rules that clearly identify the expectation and intent for cities, property owners, advocates to implement the intent of House Bill 2001. And that is our, that is our charge as staff implementing this policy. So I think we've achieved that. So a couple of housekeeping items here. Robert, if you could advance the slide. So of course, today we're asking the commission to move to adopt these proposed rules that are included in your packet, the OARs, Oregon Administrative Rules, are Attachment B, and the Large City Model Code is Attachment C in your packet. Of course, we'll hear public testimony today. There's a few folks signed up. And Robert, if you could advance the slide one more, thank you. For those who are listening in today and who are interested in providing testimony, you can do so by registering on the DLCD website or sending written comments to housing.dlc d@state.or.us. Robert, next slide. Thank you. So just a refresher here for the commission and those who are viewing today. House Bill 2001 requires for large cities, those cities outside of the Portland metro boundary, 25,000 population or greater, cities within the Portland metro boundary of 1,000 population or greater, and then urbanized areas of Clackamas, Washington, and Multnomah counties. The requirements for these cities and local jurisdictions, they allow for duplexes on every lot and parcel that allows for the development of single-family detached homes. They also have an additional requirement that says the need to allow for the development of triplexes, quadplexes, townhomes, and cottage clusters in areas that are zoned residentially and also allow for the development of single-family detached homes. Robert, next slide. And here's a, just a reminder for the commission on the timeline. So large cities are required to adopt locally compliant codes with the rules that the commission is poised to adopt today by June 30th of 2022. There's also a requirement in House Bill 2001 that the commission adopt rules that large cities can work within by the end of 2020, so December 31st of 2020. Next slide, please, Robert. Again, this is a very familiar slide to the commission, but I think it does provide a good frame of mind to think about these rules. You'll hear kind of two different terms, the Model Code and the Minimum Compliance Standards. The Model Code is a very specific set of standards, one, one path to compliance for, or compliance with House Bill 2001. It's written in a way where cities can apply it directly, and it has an enforcement mechanism in that regard. If a city does not comply with the minimum compliance standards in Division 46, by the specified deadline, the Model Code applies directly. And it's got this modular implementation. A city can adopt, you know, 95% of the Model Code and plug in different standards that they feel work better for their context. Of course, the minimum compliance standards are the larger umbrella. It's the flexibility. It's the range of options that cities can implement to comply with House Bill 2001. And this is where we define the set of reasonable standards, and that comes into play a little bit as we're talking about the remaining items today. Next slide, please, Robert. All right. And so just, this is just a reminder of where we kind of started and what we've gotten resolved. And then Robert will take it from here and touch on the remaining items. Thanks, Robert.
All right. Thank you, Ethan. Chairman MacArthur, members of the commission, good morning. I'm Robert Mantalillo, Housing Planner with DLCD. And like Ethan mentioned, I'll be going through the remainder of this presentation and outlining some of the remaining items that we, that we were asked to resolve at the November meeting. So in, at the November meeting, we came to the commission with some changes that were made from the September meeting. And this list of six are those items that we proposed changes for. We have master plan communities, goal protections, infrastructure constrained lands, cottage cluster standards, performance metric approach. We did an analysis. We went through that. And alternative setting and design standards. Some of these were resolved at the November meeting. There it is. But there are three items still that needed further refinement. The commission asked us to go back and refine these a little further and come back today in December with some recommendations. And as Ethan mentioned, we held a joint RAC and TAC meeting on November 24th to further discuss these three items. And we revised Division 46 based on the feedback received at that meeting. And just a little setup as to how these slides are gonna go, where for each of these three items, we're going to first go over the, the intent, the proposed original intent of, of the language, some feedback and concerns that we received on that original language, and then some options and recommendations. Two of these items have options that the commission will, will consider. So first up is alternative setting and design standards. So in the original provision, this was written to accommodate cities that already allow for the development of middle housing. We heard from a few cities throughout the state that already had some provisions in their code to allow for the development of middle housing, and they wanted to continue to use those, those provisions. They didn't want to have to change them because there was something different that we were proposing in the, in the minimum compliance standards. So to do that, the city must be able to demonstrate substantial production of middle housing while applying their existing standards and allowing cities to use this path for both the setting and design standards that are not part of the minimum compliance standard. So some comments and feedback that we received on that original language was that the metric did not accurately reflect anticipated middle housing development, potentially undermines the parameters of the administrative rules. The legislature did not intend to allow cities to utilize a safe harbor to avoid a consideration of unreasonable cost and delay. And some cities were not, early adopters could not utilize this provision. So those were some of the comments that we received. So getting into some of the options here, and we did go over these in November, but we'll go over them here again. So in option number one, modifications to the substantial production metric to better reflect an expectation for 3% production of middle housing over a 20-year period. That, that change, because most existing middle housing related to standards have been applied for less than 20 years, the percentage would be an annualized fraction of the 3% based on the length of time the particular standard has been effective. Next up establishes a routine check-in of substantial production every six to eight years, and that's based on the HNA schedule, six years within metro, eight years outside of the metro boundary, limits the ongoing application of setting and design standards to only areas where the standards already apply. And it provides an option for early adopters to test their design standards over time. And this is a graphic explanation of, of what option number one looks like. Up at the top here is you'll see the citing standard and the design standard. So those are both included in option number one. In option number two, this includes the same revised list as in option one, but removes the provision allowing for the continued application of setting standards. This option retains the provision that allows the flexibility in applying, in applying design standards. So here, we've taken out that top setting standard, and the design standard still applies. And in option number three, this removes subsection one entirely. So early adopters will be required to meet minimum compliance for citing and design standards outlined in Division 46 or demonstrate that their citing and design standards do not cause unreasonable cost or delay via a test that's provided in subsection two of 0235. So this provides a pathway for cities to contend that their standards comply with House Bill 2001, but does not provide a safe harbor. So here you see the diagram is, is much more simple. It takes out that, that top part and just considers the other, the other alternative setting and design standards. So some recommendations, staff is recommend, is recommending that the commission move forward with option three. Cities can use the unreasonable cost or delay test to justify alternative standards. And early adopters will have an advantage in this test because they will more readily be able to demonstrate the effect of the applicable standards on the actual development outcomes. So if an early adopter already has these provisions in place in their code, they should be able to demonstrate fairly easily through this test that they are in compliance. And here is an overall diagram of compliance. We've looked at this one before also, I believe, in September and in November. So starting at the far left, we have the different paths to compliance. Going up through the top would be the presumptive approach, the Whittleaway approach. Then you get into the performance metric that a city could choose, or they could go with the minimum compliance route. And then the minimum compliance setting and design standards. And then down below, the optional alternative setting and design standards, and that leads to compliance. Or at the very bottom is the large cities would apply the Model Code directly. And if they do that, then they would be in compliance. Okay, moving on to number two. Yes.
Just for a second, you're doing a really great job. I appreciate it. I just was hoping that we'd stop after each one and ask if commissioners, if they want clarification. We don't want to deliberate on any of these yet, but I wanted to make sure that commissioners understand what is being proposed and before we seek public input on those and then come back and deliberate. So commissioners, do you have any questions for Robert? And since I can't see your hands up, just go ahead and jump in if you do.
I do, Chair. Robert, just a quick question about option one. The, I just want to get a feel for what the quote-unquote "check-in" is. So if they were to, you know, you all have to check in with them to make sure that they're, they're producing this lands. I just want to know what that looks like as far as the department goes.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. You know, I may ask Sean Edging to address that. He worked quite a bit with this alternative setting and design standard.
Yeah, yeah, so I can answer that. So the, the check-in kind of latches on to the same check-in timeframe that the performance metric uses, which is either at a required housing needs analysis or if they, they are not subject to that housing needs analysis requirement. It's, I believe, once every six years on, on a kind of post-acknowledgement plan amendment, just kind of demonstrating that they are continuing achieving substantial production, which is that 3% over 20 years for the housing type that it applies to.
Did that answer your question, Commissioner Warren?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Other questions from commissioners? Hearing none, why don't you continue on, Robert?
Okay, thank you, Chair, and thank you, Sean. All right, moving into infrastructure constrained lands. So the original provision here, large cities could limit or exclude development on infrastructure constrained lands. Those those are defined as areas or lots without sufficient urban services where the local government could not remedy the problem through the infrastructure-based time extension request, the ITA request. And this was a categorical exclusion of middle housing. And this was part of the definition of in areas that that we were working with. So some comments and feedback that we received, any middle housing related infrastructure issue were intended to be addressed through the ITA process. And the legislature did not consider an additional infrastructure exemption for middle housing. And any proposed developer development should have the opportunity to provide that needed infrastructure if it is missing in an area and not completely take away the area altogether. And middle housing should be reviewed for infrastructure sufficiency, just like any other development type. So some changes since our November meeting. We've amended language to to remove the definition of infrastructure constrained lands and the substantive portion from OAR 660 0205. So this will remove infrastructure constrained lands from that in areas conversation. And we want to reiterate that the the city's responsibility to comply with Goal 11 public facilities in relation to middle housing. So more changes, we removed infrastructure constrained lands from the definitions, but we added sufficient infrastructure. And this means level of public services to serve new middle housing will include access to public sewer, public water, emergency vehicle access, and storm drainage. And in subsection 0220, the citing standards, we added a statement under every middle housing type in there. We added the statement, a large city may require demonstration that sufficient infrastructure is provided or will be provided upon sub middle of a insert middle housing type here, development application. So this this language is now added to triplex, quadplex, townhouse, and cottage cluster citing standards. And now the cities will now treat middle housing development in the same manner as any other residential development. For Goal 11, public facilities and services obliges cities to adequately plan for infrastructure to meet the demand for allowed uses in in those zoning districts. And local governments must plan for the increased provision of infrastructure to accommodate future middle housing development in formerly exclusively single-family residential areas. And this approach also reinforces the responsibility for local governments to plan for the extension of of public infrastructure within their urban growth boundaries and acknowledges that where local governments have been unable to develop a feasible plan for improvements to date, that the development community should have the opportunity to develop solutions while the underlying infrastructure deficiencies are addressed. Okay, and I will pause there for questions on infrastructure constrained lands.
Thank you, Robert. Questions from commissioners?
Chair MacArthur, I have a couple of questions. And and I read a couple of these in the public comments, but this isn't about public comments. I had these questions myself as well. One is that they is that cities must plan for the adequate infrastructure. And so the question then for me is, is when does that public facilities Goal 11 compliance planning happen? Is it is it during periodic review? Is there another timeframe? So I'll just get all three of my questions out. So one question is when? The second question is, what does the appropriately sized and designed mean? I think it's helpful to have the a clarification on on the record, just so that we're all going forward, understanding what that means. And then the final piece, and I just think it's it's helpful. This is an issue that's come up several times throughout the process. What what does it mean? As we think about a new middle housing type being proposed in an area that has insufficient infrastructure? Can you just describe what does that mean? Somebody lives in a in a single-family neighborhood, has had the same, let's just call them pipes in the ground for decades, and they may or may not be adequately sized for that new middle housing type. Call it a triplex or something larger in particular. And that can be addressed during the regular development review process. If you if you can just provide just a snapshot of that of what that means again, so that we're on the same page. That would be that would be helpful. So those are my three questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Lelec. I'll answer your last question first, since it's fresh in my mind. I'd say that those scenarios could could be part of this infrastructure that's already there, but may not be adequately sized for more development. Other other scenarios could be areas that are on well or septic that don't currently have public sewer, public water. Those areas previously would be taken out of consideration because they would have fallen into the infrastructure constrained lands. Where here now we're saying that if if those areas are being looked at for development, that a developer, if it's not part of the city's planned Goal 11 public facilities plan, that a developer could look at making those improvements to that area. So that middle housing would be feasible in that area. Getting back to your first question of when a city would look at their Goal 11 plan? I would say previously that would be part of periodic review, but we don't do currently. We're not currently doing periodic review. So that that is a great question. We'd have to go back and consider when the city would look at their their comprehensive plan to to look at their Goal 11 requirements.
Yeah, this is, I'm sorry, this is Gordon, just to follow up on that answer, Robert. We found, well, we don't have periodic review anymore, at least when we've done our work through key performance measures, one of which is to when cities do adequately update their or do update their public facilities plans. We found a pattern that cities actually do perhaps do a better job on keeping those up to date than than in other areas we've looked at, such as housing and economic development. And so, you know, I mean, while while there is no longer the periodic view issue that looks at this, generally for the, you know, in most of the the cities above 10,000 in the state have have been keeping reasonably up to date infrastructure plans to comply with Goal 11. That's not a universal by any means, but it is. Most of the cities in the state have have done that, done those plans in the in the reasonably recent past, but in the past 10 years.
Thank you.
And we would presume they would continue to do that.
Chair MacArthur, if I could kind of just pile on to this. The I think it outside of just the timing aspect of when cities do public facilities plans, it's more this provision, this additional provision that you might have seen in Division 46, where we're just kind of calling middle housing into consideration in those public facilities plans. That's really the functionality of this proposed rule. It's not prescribing that cities redo their public facilities planning. Rather, it's just saying, as you're doing that in the future, you need to consider middle housing as an allowed use in your low-density residential zones. And that may change the calculation of how you do those public facilities plans. So that's that's really where we're kind of headed in that direction. I do want to just kind of call out one specific edit that that we would like the Commission to consider. And that's a edit from the League of Women Voters, which is changing the wording just slightly, wordsmithing the wording just slightly to say that cities work to ensure that they're adequately planning, rather than just say, ensure that they're accommodating or changing a public facility's master planning to accommodate middle housing. It's just a slight tweak, knowing that cities may not have the ability to do that immediately, very quickly, adequately with constrained budgets. So we would like the the Commission to consider that edit.
And and this is Gordon again, the middle question Commissioner Lelec had to do with what standards would be applied. And those those would be the city's own standards that it would apply to to all levels of development in terms of, you know, for storm drainage, it would be, you know, whether the technical details of the engineering involving storm flows and capture of them, which I certainly am not qualified to speak at at any any level. But, you know, and for emergency access for roads, the city presumably has standards for what a minimum emergency access requirement for any urban level of development would be that that would have to be met, and similarly for water and sewer.
So just to confirm, Gordon, you're saying that the term appropriately sized means that it basically is what the local jurisdiction already is doing relative to other public facilities and services they need to support development. So it would be up to that local jurisdiction to figure out what their standards are and make sure that that they are planning for adequately sizing and making available services in areas that are increasing in density. Is that correct?
Commissioner MacArthur or Chair MacArthur, yes, that that is correct. It would be the standards that the local government applies to to any level of urban development, whatever it would be. They couldn't differentiate and have different standards for a middle housing versus single-family residential development or commercial development or industrial development or whatever.
And that explains why we don't want to define it in this rule because it's really up to the local jurisdiction to apply standards. And then Deputy Director Green apparently had her hand up earlier. Do you still have a question or comment you want to make?
Thanks, Chair MacArthur. It's also in response to Commissioner Lelec's question about when. We did discuss that when to update a public facility plan. Gordon, of course, is right. I attempted to insert a five-year comment in in to the rule or just to give folks a certain expectation of timing. Gordon quarterbacked that and said that we didn't have the authority within this rule to change. You know, this rulemaking process had changed to 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 change Goal 11 implementing rules. So so you don't see a certain time period. Gordon's right, the KPMs are already strong, the ways that communities are already responding. As we moved implementation after today, I know that the housing team after a break wants to work on some webinars and guidance documents, but that is the time period we kind of have in mind. It's not a sort of when you, you know, for, you know, whenever type of thing. The other catch that, of course, we all share and have an obligation to check on housing production. So that as cities' housing production strategies come forth, that's another opportunity to help ensure that communities have had the funding and the resources they need to update their public facilities plan appropriate for middle housing types in their communities. So thank you. I hope that adds additional context to what staff is considering there, Commissioner Lelec and Chair MacArthur. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll circle back to Commissioner Lelec to see if he has any follow-up questions.
Thank you, Chair MacArthur. I do not. I was reaching to unmute myself, and you asked exactly the question that was on my mind that you asked for clarification to Gordon, and I thought his responses was just the clarification I was looking for. So I really appreciate all the responses. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. And so I wanted to ask now, when we were in the middle of this topic, because there was an issue raised, I think it was with the home builders, about whose responsibility it is to ensure sufficiency of public facilities and services. And the way it works, basically what the recommendation does is say, business as usual relative to any development application. So as you said in one of your points, you're, we're treating multifamily housing potential or middle housing potential in areas, the same way we're dealing with single family. When a single-family applicant comes in to the development counter, they can't get an approval on that until the city says, yes, you have sufficient water, sewer, whatever. And it's so it, I'm just trying to, is that correct? That we still basically, even though the develop, the developer or the person who owns the property that wants to develop, is that the onus sounds like it's on them. It's really a partnership because they can't get access to pipes and sewer information without consulting with the city. So am I correct in assuming it's it's treated the same way? This new development would be treated the same way as existing development at the counter relative to ensuring sufficiency of services?
Chair MacArthur, I think the short answer to that is yes. The little bit more nuanced answer is that there may be some jurisdictions that grant exemptions to public works standards or something like that for single-family detached homes, knowing that potentially that marginal difference in infrastructure capacity can be absorbed. So but yes, generally, that is that is correct. With some nuance.
Super, thank you very much, staff and commissioners. Any other questions from commissioners on infrastructure constrained lands? Hearing none and seeing no prompt from Casaria, who's been excellent at telling me whose hand is up. I appreciate that. Let's go on to the third issue.
Okay, thank you, Chair MacArthur. So our final item here is master plan communities. The draft rules allow large cities to treat master plan communities somewhat differently than than other residentially zoned areas. These plans usually include a mix of different housing types among residential uses with non-residential uses and often designed and scaled based upon public facilities that the local government has to size to fit the density and intended use of of the land. So House Bill 2001 creates uncertainty for cities in planning infrastructure to serve a development that was that was instead developed with greater number of units. And the rules must balance the need for cities to plan for and provide infrastructure that accommodates middle housing while setting clear and reasonable expectations of infrastructure demand. Without giving cities the ability to think about that infrastructure demand, they will need to resort to providing infrastructure for the highest possible build out. So in response to testimony and discussion at September and November Commission meetings, the department has developed the following three options for Commission consideration on the the issue of master plan communities. Option zero is removing master plan communities from Division 46 altogether. Proponents of this option state that an exemption for master plan communities was not intended in the text of House Bill 2001. Local governments could attempt to limit the quantity of residential development in these areas with infrastructure sufficiency requirements. And original proposal would allow local governments to limit new middle housing other than duplexes in undeveloped portions of these approved master plan communities. Some considerations for option zero, this would be considered business as usual approach to planning for new growth in large undeveloped portions of large cities. Large cities have no incentive to plan for new infrastructure investments to accommodate middle housing in master plan communities. And it does not provide guidance to cities in how they should plan infrastructure to meet the range of development scenarios. Option one is a minimal change in language to the proposal that was presented in November. So the intent of option one was to encourage a variety of middle housing options and provide local governments a tool to achieve that outcome without overbuilding infrastructure. It allows cities to limit overall development of residential densities in new master plan communities at a minimum of 15 dwelling units per acre. And it added housing mixed provisions suggested by the the city of Wilsonville to allow cities to acquire two or more middle housing types in master plan communities. This was in addition to the language from from November. Some considerations for for option number one. It functionally creates a minimum maximum development density on residential. development density on residential development in master planned communities. Some have perceived this to be a cap on allowable densities. And hinges on density of units rather than infrastructure capacity. The number of units in a development may not have a linear correlation to infrastructure demand. So it's really just dependent on a units per acre metric. And finally, option number two, this really shifts the focus to infrastructure planning. It removes the focus on proposed residential density of units per acre and focuses directly on minimum planned infrastructure capacity. So the question really becomes how many units per acre should the infrastructure be able to serve? And large cities must plan infrastructure to accommodate at least 20 units per acre within the Portland metro or 15 units per acre outside of the Portland metro. And if the development exceeds the infrastructure capacity of a master plan, the city can require the developer demonstrate how the increased demand will be accommodated. So if that includes improvements to infrastructure to meet a higher demand, then that would be for the developer to to demonstrate how to do that. Some considerations here, it provides clear direction and guidance to cities that new areas must be planned to accommodate a certain level of infrastructure demand. It does not function as a cap on residential development. Since we're no longer talking about a units per acre, we're now talking about how many units per acre the infrastructure can can serve. There's no, there's no functional cap of residential development. And it incentivizes the production of middle housing as proposals that include only low density, single family detached developments would still be subject to providing infrastructure necessary to accommodate that 20 or 15 units per acre. So some recommendations here, staff is recommending that the commission move forward with option two. It also recommends that the department study the market economics of dwelling units per net acre thresholds in several areas around the state. And then we would bring some of those results back to the commission within a year and propose any changes that we find. So I'll pause there for questions on master plan communities.
Thank you, Robert. You did a really nice job outlining those various issues. I had a question that came up when I was reading that City of Hillsborough's testimony. And I just want to clarify that what the rule would require is for the developer to put the infrastructure in that to accommodate the 20 units per acre in the metro area and then 15 elsewhere, but it doesn't require them to build to that standard on day one. Is that correct?
Chair McArthur, yes, essentially that that is correct. The the infrastructure would be planned to meet those those thresholds, but a developer may not necessarily build to to that 20 or 15 units per acre.
Yes.
Chair McArthur?
Yes, please.
Sorry, I jumped in and cut you off. I'm sorry.
My head, Ethan, thank you.
And so, yeah, yes, Robert's, Robert's correct. And your assumption is correct. One thing, you know, that we have really tried to do is thread this needle about providing or asking cities to provide the infrastructure to accommodate middle housing while not prescribing that middle housing be constructed in master plan communities. The fine line in House Bill 2001 is that cities allow for the development of middle housing in their, within their city. And then that includes master plan communities. What it does not do is require those middle housing developments within those master plan communities. Option two, you know, just by way of requiring that kind of floor of infrastructure capacity incentivizes middle housing development because developers, if they're only going with low density, single family detached, they're quote unquote, leaving infrastructure capacity kind of on the table. And so that provides a market incentive to increase the amount of middle housing to reach that infrastructure capacity. So that's the, that's the needle we're trying to thread with this one.
Yeah, this is Gordon. Is some of the letter, the letter we got from Hillsborough and from LO, the League of Oregon Cities as well, pointing out that metro independently of our work has a, has a minimum density requirement of 80% of the maximum density. And there were some questions raised about how that would interact with this rule. In other words, basically requiring a development, even if a developer didn't want to do 20 units per acre to do at least 16 years per acre based on the metro rule. I just want to point out that that's, that's an independent rule of metros. We, that's between the cities and metro as to whether, you know, metro continues to apply that requirement going forward. So that's another factor. And you saw it in the letters that you received, a couple of letters you received questioning the interaction there. And, and in fact, you know, the assumption there is that some cities are questioning, you know, Hillsborough and League of Oregon Cities, whether the 20 units per acre is a, is a market feasible density for areas that the, on the fringe of the Portland metro area, urban area. And that's one of the reasons why, well, we, you know, we, first of all, we did receive some indication from at least one city, Tiger, that they believe those densities were feasible. But we are, that's one of the reasons we are recommending that we be directed to come back and do some more analysis and, you know, speaking with the development industry and others about the feasibility of those densities to see if they need any tinkering or adjustment in about a year going forward.
Chair?
Yes, please.
I just wanted to ask you, Gordon, when you say, do some analysis, you know, look at the market conditions a year from now, I just want to make sure we're always keeping in the lens of infrastructure, though, right? Like, we're looking at the dwelling units per acre conversation, but it's tied to infrastructure. I just wanted to confirm that.
Commissioner Holova, yes, that's correct. You know, it's tied to infrastructure. In addition, you know, there are the factors that we, that we want to encourage more efficient use of land everywhere. And, yes, so we'll be looking at it in terms of, you know, I think the issue is if, if developers are saying, we don't want to develop at those densities, and yet cities are providing the infrastructure for those densities, they're basically, you know, over, overbuilding infrastructure and that leads to additional housing costs. So that's, you know, I think we would be surveying developers, we would be looking at the infrastructure, different infrastructure costs as well for providing higher densities. You know, that does lead to more, the need for more infrastructure. So it's kind of a web of different aspects that we'd be looking at and reporting back to the commission on.
Yeah. And I think one of the things that was brought out a couple of times, but I don't think any of us have have a ready answer is how, and I think you touched on it in the, there was a touch on it in the report, you know, how much more infrastructure do the additional units need in comparison to a single family home? Like, you could have, you know, five people living in a single family home and three people living in a triplex, right? Or four people, you could have more people consuming in a single family home. And so I think all of this has taken the natural assumption that this requires more infrastructure. And I'm hoping that the year from now would consider that concept also.
Yeah, Commissioner Holova, we would, our analysis would definitely take that into consideration, you know, while I think we have some, you know, initial discussed discussion of that in the staff report about the lesser amount of infrastructure that's used by attached units, for example, versus detached residences.
Yeah, thank you.
And I guess along those lines, Gordon, I would like to see, so the next one year is a small snapshot, especially in these times. So I'm assuming that the report that you bring back, the analysis that Seth brings back, not, doesn't just look at what's happened over the past year or the past even five years, but thinks about what that trajectory is going into the future and what the need might be in the future for those particular areas.
Yes, Chair McArthur, we don't see that as being a look within a year at what's actually occurred because you're correct that there's not, you know, things don't occur that quickly in the development world. This would be kind of, you know, surveying developers, talking to cities, talking to other interested parties and looking perhaps at other, you know, even with economists at projected trends in the housing market in the Portland area and then outside the Portland area to see what to, you know, give a, give a more thorough, if you will, estimate of what, what we would see going forward as opposed to looking at what's actually been built. Because that's, that's looking backward. We'd want to look forward to give. And whenever you do projections, you can always be, be wrong, but we'll, we would do our best to give projections or estimates to your commission that would be based upon some thorough research and, and facts and trends that were seen by, you know, that were, you know, empirical and, and not just conjecture.
Thank you. That's really helpful. And I really, I, this is a very creative solution on the part of staff. And I look forward to, if we adopt this rule in this way, I look forward to seeing some of that analysis in a year. So thank you for that. Other questions from commissioners? I guess hearing none, seeing no text message from the wonderful Casaria. I will assume that we don't have any questions at this point. And so am I correct, this, this is the, this sums up staff's recommendation and that we can close this part and then go to the public comment period? Or does staff want to say something as in an overall way?
Thank you, Chair McArthur. No, just topics for commission direction. We have the changes to the items that we went through. We have some options in there first for commission direction and then any other provisions of the model code or, or Division 46 that, that the commission would like to discuss.
Great. Thank you. As usual, for all the staff, excellent staff report and, and Robert, really nice presentation. So this, so now we'll open it up to public comment. We received a number of written testimony, City of Ben, City of Hillsborough, the Housing Advocate Group, I think you mentioned League of Oregon. Well, I did see the League of Oregon Women's. And then I didn't see the League of Cities testimony. So I'll have to go back and print that, or perhaps somebody is going to be out there today and talk about that. After somehow I missed print copying that out for myself. But I will look for that as others are testifying. And so I'm going to ask everyone to keep their comments to three minutes. Ms. Taylor is going to be the timekeeper. I think her plan is to put some kind of clock on the screen or something to help us all out on that. And with that, I'd like to welcome a former chair, Liz, to talk to us. Welcome.
Good morning, Chair McArthur and commissioners. Thank you so much for the opportunity to serve on the, as your liaison to the rec and the tech. It's been a real pleasure. So I want to look just at what your tasks are today in big picture terms. For the last three meetings, you focused on what in the world does it mean where the legislation says that you need to allow upper middle housing in all areas? Legislature did not define what an area is. And it didn't give us any kind of a measure of allow it in all areas. So it's not only we don't know what an area is, we don't know how much needs to be allowed in all areas. House Bill 2001 just doesn't tell us that. So that is about as broad a delegation to the commission as I can imagine. And it's your job to flesh out what in the world does that mean? And how do you make it work? I think the rec and the tech have done, and staff particularly, led by staff, have done an exceptional job. The outreach to the community was excellent. Overall, the process was excellent. We had a great range of expertise on the rec. Staff did a good job of listening and in responding to the concerns that they heard. So I think what you end up with is a solution oriented set of rules, not just a compromise. Not everybody got what they wanted or thought was the best thing. But what staff did is try to accommodate the concerns from all sides as much as possible and come up with a workable solution. And I think they have done a marvelous idea of making this great big concept work. And I think it will be, you'll be able to, cities will be able to, and developers will be able to operationalize the rules as proposed. And I support the staff recommendation. And I congratulate the commission and staff and the rec on taking this first large step towards increasing housing supply and diversity and access. I think it will take many years before we see the full results, but that's what planning is about. It's true, same thing for goal three or for other planning aspects. It doesn't, we're not going to see the results tomorrow, but we are going to see great improvement in housing access and diversity over the next 10 or so years. So thank you very much and congratulations to everybody.
Thank you, former Chair Liz. It's always wonderful to have you here and special super thanks for your participation on the rack for yours and Commissioner Holova. It's really, really been a very strong link between the rack process and the various subcommittees of the rack to this body. And we really thank you. I especially wanted to call out your, the way you framed the rule. I really liked that it's a solutions oriented approach I wrote down. I really like that term. So thanks for using it today. Any questions for former Chair Liz?
Chair McArthur?
Yes, Commissioner Permain.
Yeah, just seconding the gratitude, former Chair Liz. Great to hear your voice. And we, this is one way that citizens can keep participating in the commission and extend your impact. So I just also want to thank you and express gratitude.
Thank you. Well said.
Chair McArthur, I would just also like to echo the thanks to former Chair Liz. One of the things I've really appreciated being new on the commission with all of your public testimony, both in writing and your, your comments at our meeting is how you have reframed the issues very simply, which has been very, very helpful for me to grasp the key issues. And then how the, the recommendations or the solutions have either addressed those or you've had alternative recommendations. But your testimony has just been exceptional and very, very helpful to me throughout this process. So I wanted to take a moment and thank you.
Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Holova.
I wanted to, third, not second, third, former Chair Liz's participation, that particular rack, the rack and the tack for this issue was, is very complex. And I appreciate his leadership in getting involved in every little detail to understand how to guide and move and listen. And so I wanted to say thank you. And I also appreciate it.
Great.
Thank you, all of you. Appreciate the opportunity.
Yeah, we hope to deploy you again in other efforts, Jerry. We don't want to lose you. So thank you very much for coming today again to testify in person. Okay, hearing no other comments, I will then ask Mr. Lazo from the Fair Housing Council of Oregon to testify.
Thank you, Chair McArthur and commissioners. My name's Alan Lazo. I'm the executive director at the Fair Housing Council of Oregon. And I'm speaking here today representing a group of stakeholders, as you've seen in our letters, that are members of the, the rack and the various tax. Again, I wanted to open by expressing our, our gratitude and appreciation for this full process, for the staff at DLCD and for all of you on the commission. I did want to go back for a second, just remind us again about those values that continue to underlie our work. I did want to go back for a second, just remind us again about those values that continue to underlie our work together and serve as the backdrop for our comments as a coalition. Namely, that, that long history of racial inequities and planning and community development and a continued reflection of those inequities in communities today and outcomes today. And this desire to end that exclusionary practices and promote true housing choice in our communities. You know, finally, I want to add that, that we want to appreciate our jurisdictional partners that have been at the table with us, but also remind you that rules and laws are made generally to address those who would not follow them. Rather than those who have been with us around the table and are asking for those steps that help them move the rules forward. So as we're making rules and laws, I think we need to make sure we consider that. And I will remind us that there have been local jurisdictions throughout this process that are outside of the process that have indicated they will ignore these mandates and have literally called these concepts stupid. So with those underlying values, we continue to reiterate our position on two main topics. First is the master plan communities that you talked about today. Again, we reiterate that option zero, we think is the correct option and that, that, that including an exception for master plan communities is not authorized by the legislation. If you do want to move forward and include the recommendation from staff that we do have several concerns related to master plan communities. The first and most important, I think, is clarifying under that calculation of the density for twenty units per acre and fifteen outside of metro areas that it not include other multi-unit type of developments like apartment houses. We think that skews that calculation and its intent around middle housing. The other I think is around the, for master plan communities, the infrastructure assumptions that are made about redevelopment. And that we make sure that they include assumptions about middle housing redevelopment rather than freezing those master plan developments at that infrastructure level that does not consider middle housing. And then there's a small change that's in our letter route and changing May to must for requiring cities to include a mix of middle housing. And then the other area around infrastructure constrained lands, we really appreciate the progress that staff has made there. But I want to make sure again that, that they're not, that that's not being used as a way to exclude or gerrymander areas in a way that segregates higher levels of multi-unit housing by, by using that same infrastructure exclusion. So appreciate that continuing to move forward and happy to answer questions and provide more specific references to what I've called out here. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Mr. Lazo, and thanks to you and your group for your robust participation in this effort. It's, it's really helped us get us here today and, and I'm, I'm really thankful for all of that. Questions for Mr. Lazo? Vice Chair Permain?
Yes, thanks again for your participation and insights and willingness to, you know, really call in the things that are true for our history and makes us better at our jobs. So thank you. Really, I want to hear a little bit more since I know we're limited on time, but the, your observations around the infrastructure constrained lands and concerns there. So can you just say a little bit more about the specifics that you're most concerned about?
Yeah. And I, again, I think that staff has, thank you, Vice Chair Perman. I, I think staff has mostly got it right in, in revising their proposal so that we're not automatically disqualifying those lands. And we might, I think that the way they've got those different revisions combined, I, I think it works. I think our, our concern continues to be whether or not there can be, as our letter said, this manipulation of infrastructure that lessens the opportunities to create middle housing in some areas. It's a little hard to imagine, but I think when we sometimes think about the way folks might take advantage of loopholes, it becomes a little hard to imagine, but you know, would it be, would a city be able to take an opportunity to undersize infrastructure in areas or conversely not not promote the adequate sizing of infrastructure in areas that are already infrastructure deficient to exclude middle housing. Right? It really goes against the intent, but you know, that's the nature of folks who take advantage of loopholes, right? And, and again, I think I mentioned it the last hearing, I grew up in East Portland in the Rockwood area. And that, and those are area, those kinds of areas have infrastructure constraints. And if they aren't included in planning for redeeming inequities, then they continue to perpetuate those inequities. And again, that's certainly not the intent, but does what's proposed leave that open? It's that same balance we've talked about, right? Flexibility and accountability.
Great, great question. And I really appreciate your answer. Other Commissioners have questions for Mr. Lazo?
Chair, I have a question.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Lazo. And thank you for bringing up the racial equity issues. That's, that's always been kind of my concern in this. And in terms of the infrastructure kind of limitations, I would, I mean, ideally, it would have been good to have in, in the bill included some, some funding or some sort of mechanism for that, you know, for cities to have access to, right? That, that wanted to, to deal with these issues, but would that not mean the case? I guess I'm, I'm wondering, this is more of a future, kind of a future question, like in terms of like advocacy and so forth, is that, is that something that, that has been talked about? Have you, you know, is that kind of in the, you know, in your, in your sights for the future?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Sandoval. Without a doubt, it can, it always is, right? How do we resolve those inequities that are perpetuated in systems? And it, and you know, to the credit again of our jurisdictional partners, we certainly understand the constraints they're under. And there are no good solutions. But it doesn't mean that we shouldn't be intentional about trying to solve those issues that are longstanding and perpetuating. And you're right, you know, I, I don't think we can solve everything through legislation and go back and try and get those in. Some of them have to happen outside these processes. And, and you're exactly right, Commissioner Sandoval, it happens on multiple fronts. And is part of holding and asking jurisdictions to be accountable for those concepts and those processes. But this single process doesn't necessarily do it. As you're pointing out, those, those are happening by lots of community partners and other kinds of partners on other fronts. But we, what we ought to make sure we're not doing is making it worse in anything that we're moving forward with. And I'm not saying that this does, but that's why we've continued to push, right? These are opportunities for us to not only make progress and be bold, as Director Ru has said, but it's also opportunities for us not to get it wrong again and to continue to get it right as we move forward.
All good points. And I want to thank Commissioner Sandoval for raising the question, the question of money. And I'd like to spend more time on that at a, a future meeting, but you know, the resources are needed on all fronts to actually make good on this stuff. And so, you know, money to local jurisdictions, grant to the local jurisdictions to both make amendments in their, their plans and their rules, but also for infrastructure. Infrastructure is really a key. It's been a key for a long time, but especially in light of the need to make sure there's adequate infrastructure to create more density in, in communities. And you know, that is an issue really for the legislature. And I think we'll talk about this a little bit in the context of the regional housing analysis discussion we have in January. And I hope we can broaden that conversation and include some of, some of the wonderful folks that were involved in the rack process. Talk about that in terms of getting some momentum to get some action finally on this very important issue. So that's kind of a a secret, double secret plan of mine, but it's not so secret anymore. Commissioner, I guess, I don't know if it's other Commissioners, Commissioner Warren and then Deputy, Deputy Director Green would like to ask a question. Commissioner Warren?
I'm sorry, I didn't have my hand up.
Oh, okay. Okay. Then I will assume, I'll just go ahead and thank you. I'll call on Deputy Director Green.
Thank you, Chair MacArthur and Commissioner Sandoval. Thank you. And of course, Mr. Lazo, thank you for continuing to make time to be with us and help advance the intent of the legislation. We're very grateful, as Commissioners have said. And to all the participants of RAC and TAC, truly, it's been a, it has taken a true village of sixty or so folks. Wow. Regarding the funding that Commissioner Sandoval asked about, Chair MacArthur, I just wanted to note that Director will speak, Director Ru will speak to that at the third agenda item with the Governor's Recommended Budget. There is $2.5 million identified to help implement it, House Bill two thousand and one and two thousand and three. So you're right to flag that. That won't pay for the infrastructure, Chair MacArthur, as you've noted, but funding strategy on infrastructure deficiencies is still kind of out there in Jermaine for, I'm sure all cities, most if not all cities would agree, but thank you. Oh, um, and then also Commissioner Sandoval has kindly agreed to serve with staff on the Grants Advisory Committee for LCDC. So Commissioner Sandoval, I just wanted to make sure that we haven't forgotten that. And with Jim and Gordon and I were talking about it just yesterday. So thank you. Thanks, Chair MacArthur.
Great. Thank you. All good points. We'll hear more about at least the grant part of the, the equation later when Director Lu speaks. Any other Commissioners have questions for Mr. Lazo? Seeing none, I don't think. Thank you very much.
Ellen, thanks you. Thank you so very much for your help in this process.
Great. So then the next person that we want to tee up is Mary Kyle McCurdy from Thousand Friends of Oregon. Welcome, Mary Kyle.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning, Mary Kyle McCurdy with One Thousand Friends of Oregon. I want to thank the staff in particular for their endlessly generous time that they have given to all of us as we've gone through this process. Ellen Lazo has just presented a testimony of our group. And I'm just going to touch briefly on a couple of things and then end with a recommendation for the commission going forward. First, on the infrastructure constrained lands, as Ellen mentioned, our concern continues to be that local governments could you, that do not want to fully implement two thousand and one and really allow a diversity of housing types in every neighborhood. Will use excuses of infrastructure to lessen on the ground building and availability of middle housing. We know from the experiences of implementing the previous legislation on ADUs and from comments made during the course of two thousand and one in this rulemaking that this is not an imaginary concern and it's not all about money for infrastructure. I can tell you ways in which some cities tried to creatively get around the ADU thing, claiming infrastructure, but really not. However, we do recommend that you make it clear that the burden is on local governments, not the applicant, to demonstrate that a lot or an area lacks sufficient infrastructure. We think HB two thousand and one actually flips that assumption. And that it says middle housing is allowed unless there's a good reason not. And we think that burden's on the local government. For master plan communities, we recommend that we support, if you're going to go this route, option two. And clarify that the fifteen or twenty units per net acre is calculated based on the areas that are planned to allow single family residential dwellings and not other types of multifamily housing. That's consistent with two thousand and one. I am concerned that in all of these compromises that all interests have made over the course of this, that we have lost some sight in things we agreed to at the beginning of the process, including HB two thousand and one. A major objective was that this is the end of neighborhood segregation by housing types and therefore by race and economics. It will not be business as usual as we do residential planning and zoning in Oregon. And that it should be as easy a choice from a zoning perspective to build, for example, a fourplex as it is to build a single dwelling. Therefore, as one way to monitor and ensure that the rules you have adopted going forward is, we recommend that you request staff to provide for you a written update, a status report at every commission meeting between now and the final adoption date of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Between now and then, fifty-five cities will be going through a public process to craft and adopt either a model code or a code that they hope complies. And we recommend that it address the following topics at least. Each city's schedule for crafting and adopting two thousand and one, including a public, its public engagement process. Whether a city plans to adopt all or some of the model code, whether there's a pattern to what parts of the model code are being adopted wholesale and what parts are being modified by medium and large cities. Affordable housing, two thousand and one requires medium and large cities to consider at least three thousand, or excuse me, at least three affordable housing provisions, which are listed in the bill and which we have not really talked about. And encourage those cities to, each city is required to consider those three and encourages each city to consider other affordable housing provisions along with two thousand and one middle housing types. We think each status report should document each city's actual consideration of these three and other affordable housing provisions. And finally, ADU compliance, House Bill two thousand and one revised and clarified certain provisions of the ADU law that was passed in two thousand and fifteen. As the fifty-five medium and large cities are going through their compliance of two thousand and one, they must also review those cities' compliance with the ADU statute. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Kyle. All good points. Commissioners questions?
Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Halaeva.
Mary Kyle, the last thing you said about ADUs, because you were running out of time, it went really fast. I just didn't catch what you said.
Thank you. Yes, section seven of House Bill two thousand and one clarifies reasonable local regulations relating to citing and design of ADUs. In response to some litigation that has been done about the original ADU law and certain cities' attempts to get around it unsuccessfully to get around it. So there were some clarifications made in House Bill two thousand and one regarding what really is a reasonable citing and design provisions for ADUs. So cities, the fifty-five cities, well, all cities to which the ADU provisions apply, that, that previous legislation applies to all cities over twenty-five hundred in size. So they should all be in compliance with that ADU provision, but you have the, your staff has the, they will be going through these fifty-five medium and large cities right now as they each go through compliance of two thousand and one in all of its respects, including the ADU provision. So I don't want us to lose sight that that ADU provision is in two thousand and one or the affordable housing requirements to consider certain affordable housing provisions, because we haven't talked about either of those. Is that clear?
Uh, yeah, the affordable housing, you don't see that as a part of two thousand and three? Mark?
Commissioner Halaeva, two thousand and three definitely goes into that in detail, but two thousand and one actually lists three, three specific things that every city going through two thousand and one must consider in their two thousand and one adoption between now and their deadline, June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-one or two thousand and twenty-two. As we know, two thousand and three has longer timeframes for compliance. So at least these three considerations, these three tools must be considered by cities to see whether they can make certain kinds of middle housing more affordable.
Okay. Any follow-up, Commissioner? So any other Commissioners have questions for Ms. McCurdy?
Chair MacArthur?
Yes, please.
Okay. Um, just thank you, Mary Kyle. This is, really appreciate your cooperation with stakeholders and your written testimony is excellent. So thank you for that too. And I just want to amplify your point about report back to commission. And to say to staff, we'd love to hear if that seems reasonable, that when we're finished with testimony. Because I could see essentially kind of a, a running list over time. And I know we have quite a bit that you're monitoring, so doing it in a way that's efficient and thoughtful, obviously, but I really appreciate that kind of consideration for us to be thinking about. So thank you for bringing that forward.
Thank you.
Chair MacArthur, thank you. Mary Kyle, I always really appreciate your ability to connect all these dots. From House Bill one to two thousand and three to ADU, it's always, it's, it's a great, great perspective and I genuinely appreciate it. I, I really like your, your, your comment that it needs to be as easy to build a fourplex as a single family zone, as a single family dwelling unit in, in these areas. And I was going to jump in as well and echo Vice Chair Permain's comment that the update at the meetings, and I, I am interested in staff's perspective, not necessarily immediately, but perhaps at the end of this meeting or even in January, just because I think implementation, as Chair MacArthur kicked this whole meeting off today, today is really focused on implementation. And once we turn the corner today, it is going to be very, very important to understand how this program's being implemented overall. And I think, you know, especially if there's going to be more analysis done in the Portland metro area next year. And I saw at least a couple of other comments that we really need to think about how is this whole program working for cities as we go forward. So I think this will be a very important topic for us to discuss frequently over not just the next, gosh, eighteen months or so, but for the next several years. My, my, my only question, and I'm just interested, and I don't know if it's a question or just, I'm interested in your perspectives, is that you, you stated, and I agree, that the burden is on local governments to demonstrate if infrastructure is not available and not the applicant. But do you see or do we expect there are going to be these situations where it's an, it's an old part of town? we expect there are going to be these situations where it's an, it's an old part of town, it's a highly desirable part of town, it's a part of town that is walkable and close to transit, but the pipes in the ground, for example, are just insufficient. And so the local government can make the argument that, that the applicant or the developer, they can upgrade those pipes. And the applicant is going to say, well, it's not fair. It's not, it's not a, it's not, it's not a fair requirement, because they would have to update the whole, upgrade the whole street or a whole section. So do we anticipate there, do you see that there could be these situations where they're pointing fingers at each other, where the local government's saying, the area is not sufficient for all these reasons, and the applicant is saying, well, it's not our fault. The city needs to, to upgrade the infrastructure so that we can then build the housing in compliance with this, with the new rules. I'm just interested in your perspectives on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner LeLac. Yes, I think those kinds of discussions will take place. And our recommendation is sort of, who goes first? Does a developer have to come up and say, it's sufficient, and then that's where the argument starts? Or a city says, it's not sufficient? And you're, the example you gave, seems like a city would say, it's not sufficient. And then the developer should under, as it's proposed, the developer has the opportunity to say, but I am capable of making that sufficient for the development that I am proposing. So it's really, who has that first burden, that initial burden of showing it's sufficient or insufficient? We believe that House Bill 2001 puts that burden first on the local government, because there's this underlying assumption that, an objective of desegregating neighborhoods by housing types, at least by these types of middle housing, and the notion of in areas is gray. So if, and the, and there is this flexibility that we, that the legislation has given. We can argue about how much flexibility, but there's something there. And, but, but I think it does flip the burden onto cities to show, this is an area where it's currently insufficient, and this is why. And the developer can come back and say, either, we disagree with you, or we do agree with you and we can provide sufficient infrastructure. We are not going to be able to write rules that will preclude every appeal of a local government decision. We, we know that. And that's why the monitoring reports are so important. What's working, what's not working? Why? Is there something that needs to be adjusted as we go forward? I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, I just, I think it answered the question. I, we were trying to get away from allowing a local jurisdiction upfront to define an area that didn't have infrastructure. So that's why we changed the language to place it at the development proposal stage. And so you used the word, there's flexibility in this in areas thing. Well, in Commissioner LeLac's example, it would, I, I don't think you were saying that the community would say, well, not only is this development not allowed, but this whole area of Old Town that is a great area but doesn't has bad pipes. I don't think you're saying that they can exclusively, those aren't available. At the time of a development proposal being made for a specific duplex, triplex, whatever it is, that they would make it based on a determination at that point with that particular development. Is that correct?
Correct, Commissioner McCarthy. Thank you.
We weren't going back to the old way.
No.
There's no, many folks didn't like, so, okay, great. Thank you very much. Other questions from commissioners?
Yeah, I just have a comment. I would also like to kind of second what Commissioner LeLac said. And I think the idea of having some type of status report on how it's going with certain cities that start to, you know, move forward on this would be important. So maybe staff at a different time could kind of give us how that might work. I think not just for us to hear. I mean, that's obviously important, but I think also there's a lot of people watching this process. There's a lot of people that watch these meetings. There's a lot of cities that will have to go next. And, you know, I would hate to say it's going to be painful, but there's going to be lessons learned, right? As we move forward. And I think being able to talk about that openly as we move so that others that have to do that next can kind of follow along and hopefully avoid some skinned knees or what have you, I think would be really helpful, not just for us, but for kind of the wider community, to be able to, to know what's happening and, and be able to think about their own process.
Great. Yes, thank you, Commissioner Jacobson. Commissioner Warren?
Yes, thank you, Chair. This is more of a question for staff, since I'm somewhat of a newbie to this commission. Is it possible for, for this rulemaking to be somewhat dynamic? So can we come back and change this as we go along? Is it possible for this to be kind of a living document, per se?
It's a great question.
Yeah, this is Gordon, Commissioner Warren, Chair McCarthy. Yes, you, any rule that you adopt, hopefully today would be, could be amended at any time. And as long as we follow the correct rulemaking procedures for doing that, you know, technically with, you know, state, state standards, we could, we could amend the rules. Now, you know, we don't, we can't amend rules on a dime, if you will. But certainly, there's no legal prescription or prevention for us to amend these rules as necessary going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Seeing none, no hands, hearing none. Thank you very much, Mary Kyle. As usual, really good stuff. I'd like to call up now Daniel Serris. I'm sorry if I butchered your name, Serris or Serris.
Hi, this is Esther. Mr. Serris has let me know he will not be able to join us this morning.
Thank you. I'm using my old list that you sent last night. Thank you very much. And the next person would be Colin Cooper from City of Hillsborough.
Looks like you muted, Mr. Cooper.
Sorry. Normally, when I pull my mic down, it automatically takes me off mute. Good morning again, Chair McCarthy, members of the commission. I want to thank you for the time that you're spending on this very important issue. I also want to thank the DLCD staff, as I have in the past, for their tireless work over the last year, where they've done an outstanding job. This morning, I'm going to focus on just one thing, and that's the master planned communities. And the fact that the city, as I've written in my letter, strongly recommend the adoption of option one. We believe that option two, as you're hearing a recommendation from your very able staff today, leaves us with too much uncertainty. The city of Hillsborough embraces density. We embrace middle housing. Our record demonstrates that, as I've written examples in my written testimony to you. Our city council has and currently continues to have actually published goals to embrace density, to increase the variety of housing, to improve the results for equity and economic, both economically and racially. The challenge, as Mr. Howard noted earlier in the presentation, is that we do find that with option two, you end up with a de facto maximum density of 25 dwelling units an acre. And our legal review is that with the metro housing rule, we are left with an 80% requirement to meet minimum density, thus a 20 dwelling unit acre minimum. I'm pleased to hear that Tiger believes they can reach that. We've done a detailed analysis of the master planned community of South Hillsborough, which we're currently building. And again, in my written testimony, noting the diversity of people living there. Don't feel that that's quite ready to go, but we feel that you should be asking the development community, can we get there? We really can't stress enough the need to marry the infrastructure development with the market reality of producing middle housing and all housing. It's really important not to stall development. And so I encourage the commission to consider the adoption of option one. Again, the, I'm trying to think if I have one last point. I think I'll leave it at that. And I'm certainly available for questions. I had a meeting just this morning from 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM with a master developer of our most recent urban growth boundary expansion area. And when I described the latitude of density, they were saying, how do we plan for infrastructure? How do we make those costs? And the fact is, we're not talking about infill development or redevelopment. Greenfield development behaves differently. We have to be able to plan for infrastructure. And STC law does not allow us to plan for that aspirationally. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Always appreciate your comments, because you're doing this work and good work in Hillsborough and making things happen. So thank you. Other commissioners have questions for Mr. Cooper?
Chair McCarthy, thank you, Colin. I appreciate your comments. And I had kind of a similar question about the STC law and how do, how would that infrastructure be, be financed, paid for? Who would pay? Would there be an adverse effect on the market? Or the economics of, of moving forward with a development, such as the one you just had a discussion with this morning? I'm just interested in your thoughts on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner LeLac. That is a, I'm not an STC law expert, but I will tell you that the likelihood is that we will stall development moving forward, affecting housing affordability for our entire community if we don't get it right. And we certainly can't overcharge to oversize capacity for the maximum allowed under option two, for example. And we don't want to under, or underbilled, obviously, as well. So there is a real delicate balance. So when we go out to do master planned communities, we sit down with our development communities. They are partners. That is one of the keys to our success. And we say, what's the, here's our city's comprehensive plan. Here's our policies. We want to achieve all of these things, from multifamily housing to middle housing to single family, to create a spectrum for complete housing that, that achieves our recognized HNA's currently, and what we undoubtedly will respond to appropriately for the House Bill 2003 requirements. And when we're doing all that, we put it out on the ground. Again, greenfield development, very different. We're not talking about one, you know, new quadplex here on the block and one over there, and a few more people, you know, driving in and out. So it's a real challenge to develop a financing program that achieves all that. When I talk to our South Hillsborough development partners, and for those of you unfamiliar with that, that's a 1,200 acre area, and last urban growth boundary cycle in 2010, took till 2014 to get it. Point is, time travels, expenses go up. We talk to our development community, and we're right on the bubble right now at $50,000 a door for STC costs for all of the transportation, sewer, water, and parks requirements. So this is real money business, and we are really trying to respond both to our Portland Metro, our city's need, our Portland regional need, and our state need for producing additional housing. Hope I answered your question. I might have gotten off a little bit too far.
Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Holova.
Colin, I had a question. When thinking about the infrastructure needs for missing middle housing type versus single family, do you, does your jurisdiction treat the units the same, as in like, one unit of single family home need is the same as one unit of a triplex, let's say? In, in other words, is their ability to, if you have issues with like scaling up infrastructure for a higher density than you think is going to actually happen, is there a mitigation that, that your community can do in understanding the true need of that infrastructure where it actually won't have that much of an impact to sizing?
It's an interesting question, Commissioner Holova. I think on infill, we have an equivalent dwelling unit standard by which we're able to accommodate that pretty well and maybe make, you know, minor pinpoint, you know, changes for master planning. I think we just look at the spectrum. You know, we say we're going to have X dwelling units, and it doesn't matter whether the middle housing happens on a particular block and multifamily on another. We're looking at that full plan and that we're able to accommodate it in that manner. So slightly different pieces, I think, of the puzzle as how we evaluate a triplex to a single family. I think in master planning community, we're just able to lump it all together. Infill, we're looking at it in a more nuanced manner. But there are specific, you know, standards by which we look at the equivalency of the impact.
Because, I mean, there is movements toward, you know, smaller streets, like not assuming you have more units, now we need larger streets, you know. So I know there's a movement to rethinking the scale of transportation infrastructure in relation to units. I didn't know if there was a similar thought process on water. I'm trying to think of the three things that were brought up.
Well, water, sewer and transport, water, sewer and transportation. Water, water is usually pretty easy. You know, we have enough water delivery. The challenges are more typically with sewer, where we can't oversize, otherwise we end up not literally having enough flow to move product, not to be too graphic. And we don't want to end up with bellies and whatnot in the sewer lines. In addition to the fact that on transportation, you know, we're never going to build more than we need to. We want to be efficient because it has all the impacts of how we're going to then maintain this infrastructure. We never want to build more than necessary. That's not our, our job. And I can tell you that in South Hillsborough, with a very detailed finance plan that took two years to develop that through FCS, for those of you who want to go and check with them, is that South Hillsborough, for all the employment, retail, multifamily, middle housing, et cetera, we break even as a city. So the reason we're doing it is to support sort of the employment and to support a complete community and to reduce housing affordability costs. We know that creating more housing helps the entire market in our older parts of our community as well as our newer. So we're very mindful of all these impacts. And so we're never trying to oversize transportation infrastructure, which often drive the highest price, but using the Witch Hazel Village South conversation I had with these master developers this morning, it's 150 acres. If I'm at 15 dwelling units an acre versus 25, you know, that's a huge delta on transportation impact. And am I having to increase my right of ways, even if I do it through reserve? That impacts net develop, et cetera. So, I mean, we just want to know what the density is going to be. We need that range so that we can effectively plan for infrastructure. We're happy to embrace a higher number, but we need to make it as close to market reality as possible.
So can I just follow up? So your, your issue with option two versus option one seems to not be about the folk, the shift of the focus to infrastructure, because everything we've talked about is infrastructure. It seems to be more with the 20 dwelling units per acre, planning for infrastructure for that. I just want to try to get to the heart of it.
It's the, the uncertainty. We have no problem with density, as I've said earlier in my testimony. We have no problem with density. We just need to match the market reality and the market certainty with the density ranges that we can plan in. And that's why we recommend option one, because remember, it just says, allows us to cap it so that we have at least potential range. We can exceed it, but we don't, you know, option two, in our view, leaves us in this range between 25 and 20, which we think is a real challenge in the near term. And the near term is what we're talking about. We're trying to deliver more housing on greenfield development for what is clearly a very strong need.
So sorry, I just wanted to ask my question again. It appears that your issue with option two is not about the shift to thinking about it from an infrastructure point of view, because to me, that's the major shift between the two, is like, option two says, we're really saying, how do you plan for the infrastructure, like, versus the density that might occur? Is that, is that correct? You're fine with the shift to infrastructure, thinking about it in terms of infrastructure, but not fine because of the number of units?
We need to evaluate infrastructure. Sorry, I didn't answer your question more specifically the first time. We definitely want to, we need to understand the, the cost of infrastructure. And to do so, we need to know what the density is going to be.
Okay.
Option two doesn't, I don't think, narrow it down well enough for us, why we're supporting option one still.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for your time in the process.
Very, yeah.
I've enjoyed the detail that you bring, you know, the perspective and the detail. Thank you.
Commissioner Sandoval?
No, I don't, I don't have a comment, Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you did. So Deputy Director Green had a comment.
Thank you, Chair McCarthy. If I could just ask Ethan to clarify, I think that Mr. Cooper's testimony- Thank you, Chair MacArthur. If I could just ask Ethan to clarify, I think that Mr. Cooper's testimony, I think that it is a clear 20 and there's not a range in option two, but I would like Ethan to just make sure I'm right on that. Thank you.
Thanks, Kirsten. Yes, so the option two is a, I'll use the word floor on infrastructure planning, infrastructure capacity planning. I think what Hillsborough's comments and the League of Oregon Cities comments are related to is the overlap of this with the metro requirement saying that if a, you know, and Colin, you can correct me if I'm not right in the assumption that you're making about the R7 zone and how you get to this 25 units an acre quote unquote functional maximum density. That's through the allowance of a quadplex on a 7,000 square foot lot, which ultimately gets you to just about 25 units per acre functional maximum. That's the most you could build on that potential acre at 7,000 square foot lot. If there is no, and again, Colin, correct me if I'm wrong, if there's no minimum density per square, or sorry, the metro requires that the minimum density then in that case is 80% of the maximum. So 80% of 25 units an acre is 20 units an acre. So that is your quote unquote range of development potential. That I think staff views that different, a different set of issues compared to the master plan communities, even though that number is the same. You know, I think the, the metro requirement for that range, that 80% of the maximum would apply to the entire part of the city. And Colin, again, you can, you can correct me if I'm wrong there. That's my assumption, not knowing clearly all of Metro's requirements.
If I may, Chair, respond to Ethan's points. Yes, you're correct, Ethan. That is exactly how we see it. We've reached out to our city attorney who agrees that in the plain reading of Metro's code, I think it's section 3.05, and I'm forgetting the last little parts of it. There is that 80% rule and that that's the range and that's what we're talking about. And when we're out planning, we have to take a look at that because somebody by right could come in. Even if we capped it at 20, somebody by right could come back and come back and assert at 25. So now we're digging up pipes and, and we're trying to, you know, get more right of way or whatever we can do. It's challenging thing. We can't do it by permit either, you know, through the process. I mean, again, greenfield, you know, you want to look at the whole spectrum of the possibilities. So it's, it's really hard to do it on a, you know, subdivision by subdivision basis. That's why, you know, there is a real efficiency for the local jurisdiction to, and the private sector to use master planned communities with very clear and objective rules, which is what we're all in agreements on trying to achieve for the ultimate goals.
So now, now I'm just a little confused and I don't, I'm sure it's not you. It's really me trying to make sure I'm connecting all the dots, Colin. So let's say you have a master planned community that is built to the 20 units per acre for single family zoned land. So you, the developer goes ahead and develops that, you know, development happens. And let's say it's maybe 10, 15, 20 years out that somebody wants to increase the density from the 20 units to the acre and put maybe more units on there. At that point, I thought that that meant that that would be treated similar to other developments that development applications that would occur outside a master plan community. In other words, there would have to be a demonstration that there was sufficient infrastructure. And if there's not sufficient, sufficient infrastructure, no one is forcing more development there. They are encouraging the city to think about that relative to long term, but there's no development that would happen there if in fact there was a certification that the pipes don't work for 21 units. So I'm just confused.
Chair, Chair MacArthur, no, you're absolutely correct. And I apologize if I created confusion. What I was trying to describe is the difference between, you know, whatever rule is adopted that creates a floor or creates a range versus what a hypothetical by right development maximum could be. So if we don't, you know, create that range, you know, kind of a, a max and a minimum, then it's harder for us to do master planning in the greenfield in the future. Absolutely. I think it's treated pursuant to the rules, just as you described.
Thank you. That's really helpful. As are all the questions that you've been able to answer. Thank you. Any other commissioners have questions for Mr. Cooper? Thank you, Colin. Always appreciate your expertise at our table.
Great. Thank you very much.
Great. We'll tee up Miranda Bateshell from City of Wilsonville to talk next. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair MacArthur, Commissioners. My name is Miranda Bateshell, Planning Director for the City of Wilsonville. It's good to be before you again. I want to quickly acknowledge and echo concerns that are on the record related to the new goal 11 infrastructure language. However, my comments today will also focus on the master plan communities language that are in the rules and new concerns that the city has. After, I'm happy to answer questions on other items or on previous testimony if you would like. I hope by this point in the process, after all of our testimony over the past year, you understand Wilsonville's genuine commitment to equitable housing outcomes and why we participated both in bill making and now rulemaking. We also believe we can offer expertise as implementing planners and the complexities of aligning plans with development feasibility as well as providing long-term critical services at a feasible cost. This is critical. If we don't strike the right balance, we impede the ability for middle housing to actually get built. We think this is especially important in new urban growth areas, which is why we focused in these areas. We have also focused on this part of the rules because these areas present more opportunity, both for meeting substantial housing needs as well as the near term construction of middle housing. I've previously articulated the difference between development and master plan versus infill areas and why we've advocated for different rules. These rules are not an exemption. Rather, they help us harness the opportunity of these areas while rightsizing infrastructure and keeping housing costs down as much as possible. If removed, we may see less middle housing in these areas as I outlined. And as I outlined last time, we lose strategies that set the stage for increased housing diversity and housing that matches the need shown in our housing needs analysis. So we hope the commission will not select option zero. Of the options in front of you today, the City of Wilsonville prefers option one. It's been carefully crafted over several months and it provides the most certainty in matching cost effective infrastructure with a housing mix that does match the bill. With the density floor that is set, it ensures that these areas will include middle housing and will not be single family only, which is consistent with House Bill 2001. In our minds, option two still produces a disconnect between the amount of infrastructure and the number of units that will be developed in an area. With limited time, I would simply echo that the issue, the issues that were so well articulated by the City of Hillsborough, while highlighting our most significant concern, which is what are the implications of pushing density and infrastructure capacity beyond what the development community considers feasible? There is a legal proportionality issue if there's a requirement to build a system for a higher density than the housing that is initially built. So who builds and pays for the infrastructure that would be required by option two? This is the issue that we see in the shift to option two, not that in and of itself, it's infrastructure focused. Quickly, I just want to note that following your discussion last month, I was very intrigued by this density question and the diversity questions that you raised. So we did further analysis, which the city did include in our letter, which you can find on the final pages of attachment G. We were happy to learn that Villebois, a neighborhood with significant middle housing that we've been telling you a lot about over the past few months, is also significantly more diverse than other neighborhoods. Based on our analysis, we also continue to support 15 dwelling units per acre and would caution adopting 20 dwelling unit per acre as the minimum. If it's excessive, we're back to the infrastructure issues and uncertainties, affordability costs and other issues that we're hoping to address with the master plan areas language to begin with. So I just offer this in conclusion. There is a balance between theoretical aspiration and actual implementation feasibility that is crucial for us as a group to find in order for these roles to be most successful in middle housing production, not just in middle housing allowance. So the City of Wilsonville continues to advocate the option one best strikes that balance. Thank you for your time and consideration today, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Miranda, Commissioners, questions?
Chair.
Yes.
I kind of have the same question that I asked Colin with regard to when thinking about units that are not single family homes, is the infrastructure need in your community seen as the same as single family homes or as a fraction?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. Thank you, Commissioner Holova. We've spent some time thinking about this, particularly when we were doing our Frog Pond West planning. Current infrastructure methodologies really have assumptions and are accepted by the profession when they're doing their modeling on a equivalent dwelling unit basis. And so each dwelling unit is really seen as a unit. So that in terms of assessing capacity, they do that on the overall units that are provided. And they don't necessarily differentiate between what those different units look like and what the size of them are. I mean, even in a single family detached unit, you might have a single family detached unit that's 800 square feet or 1,000 square feet. And then you might have another one that's 3,500 square feet. And those methodologies to date don't necessarily differentiate between what a dwelling unit looks like. They just go based on dwelling unit when they're modeling capacity in the infrastructure systems. So I would say that Colin's well articulated answer is similar to what we do when we're looking at infill in an area. We've assumed over time, a certain amount of infill or redevelopment that might occur based on the allowed maximum density in an area. And so there's a certain amount of additional infill that could happen or redevelopment that could happen that we know can be absorbed by the overall capacity of the system. And so we do look at infill somewhat differently when the actual application comes in. And actually, that's one of the concerns we have by looking at a lot by lot analysis, but I'll put that aside to answer the question you've asked me. When we're looking at the master plan, it is, it's harder. And so we're looking at the total dwelling units that we're providing. We are open to new methodology, to new information that might show that there is a differentiation. I think what we're looking at right now is that current methodology doesn't allow us to do that. We don't have that data analysis. And so we're limited in what we can do. I also, from what we have seen, and I think some of the literature that your staff provided was excellent in showing that it isn't necessarily a one for one. So if we're looking at a quad versus a single family, yeah, it might not be 400% times the amount of infrastructure, but it's also not the same. It's not 100%, right? It's still an increase. And so we're trying to find the right balance of being able to have an expectation of the number of dwelling units that we're going to have and then be able to plan for that and have the additional capacity to support infill in the future.
Yeah, because I feel like this new, kind of what Mary Kyle, I think, had said earlier, when we had our rack and we, we came up with points, you know, this is not the status quo. We have to think of new ways of doing things in order for these new types of housing to emerge more in a larger capacity. And so I feel like these methodologies that are kind of baked into more like engineering have been, from my experience at least, more conservative in the past and, and, and need to be looked at in conjunction with planning. And I know in the City of Portland on different projects I've worked in, we've argued for, you know, different methodologies when it came to infrastructure. The unfortunate part is then it required us as a developer to go and find 3K studies from different jurisdictions, you know, very expensive. But what it, what it allowed is it, the first one that does it, it creates a precedent that, hey, this actually works. And then hopefully the next person can do it more easily and so on and so forth. So I would hope that we can not just, you know, move from the way that we think about things now when it comes to infrastructure and think about what our future as a way to, let's say, mitigate some of this. I don't think it needs to be an automatic oversizing. It could bring in other data. And maybe I should have saved that for deliberation, but it's related to what you said.
Well, and if I may just quickly add, Chair, I, I would note that in our Frog Pond East and South planning, so in the area we will be doing for the new growth area, which this master planning, which would apply to, we will be looking at variable rate STCs or impact based STCs to see if there are those differentials, which if we are able to find that analysis through that work, would also impact the infrastructure planning and the, the assumptions that we make about the dwelling unit expectations in that area and how we build that infrastructure. So we will be looking at that. And I know it was a, it was, I believe, a put in as a condition for all the new urban areas. So I think that from a planning perspective, we're trying to move the needle in that direction as well and support the concerns that have already been voiced.
Thank you very much. Other questions for Miranda? Vice Chair, do you have mine? No? Okay. You just loomed large on my screen for a second. I thought because you were poised to talk, but.
I must be, I'm unmuted, so let me myself.
The intricacies of Zoom, how people just pop on your screen. I love it. But, but well, I don't hear anything. Any other questions for you, Miranda? Thank you very much for being here today.
Thank you. I appreciate the time.
Then the next person teed up is Ariel Nelson from League of Oregon Cities.
Good morning, Chair MacArthur and Commissioners. Thanks for having me here today. I'm Ariel Nelson here on behalf of the League of Oregon Cities. You've hopefully seen the LSC's testimony on the record, but wanted to just highlight some of the key points. On infrastructure constrained lands, the shift in approach that we're now seeing in the DLC staff proposal, on a switching from an area basis to a lot by lot basis, we were able to discuss at the Rack Tech meeting and are comfortable with that approach. However, you know, there is some uncertainty in some of the new language requiring local governments to respond and plan for infrastructure to accommodate future middle housing development through goal, goal 11. I really appreciate some of the clarity that staff provided in their presentation today about what that means, it doesn't mean. And also appreciate the suggested amendment recognizing local governments and cities funding and, and planning capacity constraints to include this, certainly appropriate to include in goal 11. But, you know, what the specific language means, we would like to see a little clarity there. Specifically wanting to understand whether the proposed language refers to infrastructure for maximum zone capacity. For example, middle housing on every potential lot or something less, which is, would be our understanding of House Bill 2001. So if there's ability to further clarify that, we would welcome that. I'm going to defer to the excellent testimony from both Colin and Miranda that preceded me on the master plan communities and just confirm that the LSE strongly supports the inclusion of a master plan communities provision in the rules. And option one is our preferred, is our preferred approach. And just echo the concern around the density requirements of, you know, the 20 dwelling units per, per net acre is, as the reasons you've heard, really not feasible or creates a lot of uncertainty, which makes master planning and infrastructure planning really difficult. On alternative siding and design standards of the three options proposed in the DLC staff, staff report, the LSE continues to prefer option one, which allows a jurisdiction, the ability to prove their standards are not causing unreasonable cost delay by demonstrating at regular intervals that they are resulting in a substantial production of middle housing. Option three, which is the proposal from DLCD, requires a jurisdiction to undertake a complex and financially burdensome analysis. So it's, that's just a very expensive process. And so I think the concern with option three is that community residents may have, there may be pressure, you know, cities will face pressure from their residents to, to go through this process for certain standards. And so making that clear on the outset of, you know, what's, what's really going to have the potential for DLCD to approve or not approve. The language around in the public good is, is a little vague. So I think they're just, I realize my time is up, but to finish the thought there, they're, they're just looking at, at the, the work, the work that is potentially contemplated in this rule and wanting to manage expectations about what, what is actually going to be feasible that DLC will, will approve and not having to go through that process for, you know, work that's probably not going to, to see the outcome that residents want to see. So that's where that concern comes from. And with that, I just want to close by once again thanking DLCD staff and the commission for all of your hard work, all of the work. for all of your hard work, all of the work of the staff to lead the rack and the tack. We definitely appreciate the opportunity for the Commission to get regular reports on the implementation of House Bill 2001 and have also talked to staff and advocated for having some, not a formal rack, but some maybe quarterly working group of stakeholder members to kind of discuss at a more informal level how implementation is going to help support those LCDC report outs. And we were thrilled to see the funding for DLCD staff and the technical assistance grants included in the governor's recommended budget, the DLCD housing package, and we'll continue to advocate for that in the legislative session. So we can ensure that the staff are on board to continue this important work of, of monitoring and improving and continuing to implement this really important landmark bill. So thank you.
Thank you, Ariel. And I really appreciate your suggestions about how to move forward with this. I'm really intrigued by them and I think they're really good. So thank you. Questions for Ms. Nelson? I don't see any hands raised. I get why. I have a question, actually. So I'm, so you asked about giving, providing some guidance to cities in planning and structure for that second or long-term piece of the infrastructure language. So how do communities update their public facilities plans now? Don't they look at the comprehensive plan designations and, and assert what the public, the service needs might be for those areas now?
I, I believe so. I think that that's the clarity we're looking for in the language, that this, this rule language isn't suggesting that middle housing becomes the, you know, the number one priority, top of the list, not that it shouldn't be a priority and, you know, we should absolutely be including middle housing as they, as they update these plans. I, you know, what I heard from Ethan in the presentation makes it sound like that would be the case, that it would be part of the normal, you know, comprehensive approach that as you're, as you're looking at your public, public facilities plans, you're now simply adding middle housing as a priority in a box, you know, something that you need to assess and look at. We had suggested, you know, maybe a nod that that's the case, just something in the language making that clear that the expectation is not that cities are, you know, in their, when they're doing their plan updates, they're now planning for middle housing on every lot. That's just, you know, that wasn't clear in the language. Hearing from Ethan, it sounds like we might be there, but we were looking for more, more specific in the rulemaking language itself.
So is your point more is about planning or financing? Because I heard you say two things, and one was priority. So it seems to me when a city does their public facilities plan update, they would look at in the employment area, maybe there's nothing to change that allows, you know, different kinds of industrial uses versus, you know, office use. And so the city would take all that into consideration and assume sort of build out, plan, at least identify the different public facilities to accommodate build out in those various zones across the city. So you're, that's what I'm seeing this rule recommend. Is that what you're seeing as well? And do you want clarification of that piece? Or are you talking about once the public facilities plan is done, we're not commenting on the priority setting of a local jurisdiction because it could very well be that there is an employment area that's just as critical to needed housing to, you know, to, to, to put people to work. And that might be more important in year 10 versus some other, you know, area. So I don't think we're commenting. I don't think we should comment on the priority setting of local jurisdictions. So is that the clarification you're asking for? Which one or both?
Thank you, Chair MacArthur. I think it's both. Great question. It's both.
Okay. Appreciate that. Makes sense that you want some clarification on that. Questions? Any other Commissioners have questions? Seeing none, no heads up, no thumbs. Thank you, Ariel. Very much appreciate your participation throughout this process.
Thank you.
And I understand unless things have changed in the few minutes that Ms. Johnson sent me a text, we, she does not see Ellen Miller from the Home Builders in the audience. There was some chance that she might not be able to make it, but there is some really good testimony that the Home Builders, Ellen wrote up that we got in our packets last evening. So perhaps you've had a chance to read that, to get their perspective. And then Mr. Wall, apparently we don't have him teed up either. So, okay, great. So I think we are done unless there's somebody else out there. We are done with public testimony. So I would like to close the public testimony portion of our hearing and then offer a 10-minute break for us so we can take a pause and come back and deliberate.
Chair MacArthur. I'm sorry, this is Esther. I just received an email that Ms. Ellen Miller, she is on the phone and would like to provide testimony. I am looking for her. Okay. But I currently do not see her on our attendee list.
Chair MacArthur, this is Kirsten. If we could just pause 30 seconds to see if we can, I'll help call her to Esther as well. Thank you.
I found her unmuted.
Great. Thank you for the excellent work on that. Welcome, Ms. Miller.
Good morning, Chair MacArthur. Oh, I think. Okay. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Yes. And I just was going to mention that you have three minutes.
Okay. Thank you so much. Good morning, Chair MacArthur. Sorry for that confusion, just several conflicts this morning. For the record, Ellen Miller with the Home Builders, thank you for the opportunity in this final stretch to provide final comments on the final draft of these rules. I'm going to echo others and also echo myself in expressing my gratitude to staff for their availability and willingness to discuss these issues, even when we bring concerns to them at the 11th hour. And it feels like we've had multiple 11th hours in these, in this process. So the Home Builders submitted written testimony this morning via email because we wanted to be sure of three things. Number one, cities allow middle housing unless the city demonstrates it's why it should not be allowed. Number two, new middle housing development will be treated the same way in Public Works Review as single family development with the nuances that Ethan mentioned. And thank you, Chair MacArthur, for making this point. Number three applicant, the applicant has the opportunity to remedy an insufficient infrastructure generally. So the recommended language we provided in our written testimony ensures that this will be the case, and we ask for your consideration of adopting the proposed edit. So that's all I have in respect of time. If you would like for me to talk about the city's comments or respond to the city's comments on the sorry, the master plan communities, I'm happy to, but at this time, the Home Builders do not have a position on that issue. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ellen. Questions for Ms. Miller?
Chair MacArthur. Thank you, Ellen. I am interested in some of your perspectives on what some of the cities shared with us, given that they're likely, in many cases, going to be working with your members on planning for the infrastructure in master plan communities or addressing infrastructure constrained land. So I am interested, and if you have any other perspectives on, on those comments and discussions from earlier this morning. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chair MacArthur and Commissioner LeLac. We don't right now have a position on it, as I mentioned. But just as I was listening to the testimony, my general thoughts and response are that, you know, who builds and pays for the infrastructure is such a bigger question that we've all been asking really since the passage of Measure Five. And I think that there are many either methods for engineering design as Commissioner Hallowa mentioned, that may be outdated or overly conservative. There are just so many issues that impact this process and how we're going to be planning and paying for it. I just don't have an articulate response. And I must admit that during the meeting this morning, I, this just really hit my radar from this certain member. I did receive an email during the commission meeting, and I will be following up with that developer. But right now, we just don't have a position on that.
Thank you. Any follow-up questions, Commissioner LeLac? Okay, so I don't think anyone else's hand is up. So thank you, Ms. Miller. Appreciate your being here and for your testimony. This will now officially close the, unless we have Mr. Wall. Did Mr. Wall appear or not? Okay, then let's close the public testimony phase of the hearing. We will take a 10-minute break from this point on, and then we will deliberate on the bill or are they on the rule?
And Chair, sorry, it took me a little bit to think about this. It sounded like that there were little nuanced comments that Ellen was proposing, and I can't seem to see her testimony to see what those are. So I just was going to say, if there were little, I don't know if they're little, it sounded like little things, and the staff wanted to consider those in revising those, they should bring them after the break to our attention.
Great. And you can also access some, I think I saw it this morning. I don't think I mentioned it was last night, but I don't think I saw it last night. So I looked at my emails this morning and there was.
Oh, there we go. I got the latest one there. Okay.
For you to read also, that's good direction, the staff, if they decide they want to go that direction as a, as a proposal. Okay.
Thanks.
Good morning. My name is Esther Johnson. I am the Commission Assistant. The time is 11 o'clock and we are returning from our break. And it looks like our Commissioners and Vice Chair and Chair MacArthur are, are back in session.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. So I'm assuming housing staff is teed up to help us to get through the decision-making process. And I, it'd be helpful to actually have one of your first slides, which identifies the three issues we are talking about. If you can pull that up on the screen for us, perhaps I can talk from there for a moment.
Chair MacArthur, is this the slide that you're referring to?
Yes, thank you very much. And that actually is the order in which I was going to speak to them. At least for the first one, alternative siding and design standards, I haven't heard anything from Commissioners or from the testimony that would change, in my mind, the recommendation from staff. Is that a correct statement from, for other Commissioners? Does that resonate with the Commissioners as well?
Yes.
Great. I guess I should turn it around and say, do you object to? Especially on Zoom, I can't see your heads, but thank you. So, so I think we can just, I would suggest we agree with the recommendation of staff on number one. Obviously, a little more conversation on two and three. So let's go to infrastructure constrained lands. You've all heard testimony on this from various parties. You've taken notes, you've thought about it. I'd like to have Commissioners weigh in on where they are with the staff recommendation relative to what you've heard in testimony today. Chair? Yes, Commissioner Hallowa?
Yeah. I wanted to go with the staff's recommendation, but I did hear a couple comments related to, you know, who's, who has to have the burden of proof with regard to sufficiency with regard to infrastructure. And I got the opportunity to read the Home Builders letter during the break, and I agree with their position because it's extremely expensive and hard for a developer at each instance to be like, you know, it shouldn't be up to them to demonstrate if there's sufficiency or not. It should be up to the city. So I, that's why I wanted staff to look at that because I wanted to make sure that that works with what their recommendation says. But I strongly believe that a city should be the one saying that there's an issue and then the applicant should have the opportunity to step up if they, if there, if there's no ability for the city to do it. And this is my understanding of how it works in general. It's just being clear, clear with it. Not making, not making it weird, a weird exception for missing, you know, middle housing thing.
Deputy Director Green?
Thanks, Chair MacArthur and Commissioner Hallowa. I think Gordon is prepared to respond to that and/or Ethan, of course.
Yeah, this is Gordon. I think the intent is really that middle housing development would be treated no differently from any other development application proposal for any other type of development. And in those situations, it is the applicant's ultimate responsibility when submitting the application to demonstrate compliance with all of the city's code requirements, which include infrastructure requirements. But the city also has responsibilities as well to have a facilities plan under Goal 11 and to have a, and really as a practical matter, what happens in these situations is that an applicant will usually have a pre-application conference with the city, and they will go over various infrastructure issues, and it'll be a joint effort for the city to provide information about the current state of infrastructure and their standards for infrastructure, and then the applicant for providing an application that shows compliance with those standards. And really, the key point to make is the intent of this language is not to change that dynamic, which is a complicated and sometimes difficult dynamic between applicants and, you know, developers and cities, local governments, to make that any different for middle housing than it is for any other type of development that goes through the city's development review process.
Yeah. And so I guess my question is, you know, it says a large city may require demonstration that sufficient infrastructure is provided. So as a developer going into pre-application meeting, I'm thinking from experience, I don't usually have to come to the table to say sufficient infrastructure is provided. I usually, the city tells me, hey, your sewer line's not big enough, or hey, this is not big enough. So the wording to me that, you know, somebody might require me as a developer to say if sufficient infrastructure is provided, it's just not even within the expertise of a developer to know, is that, you know, does the city consider that water line big enough or not?
Yeah, Commissioner Hallowa, that's, that's certainly not the intent of the language. The language is, the intent is to have the same process for determination of infrastructure sufficiency as the city and an applicant go through in other situations. And if it comes back that we need to, you know, massage that slightly to make that clear, that, that sentence in the bill, in the, in the language, we can do that. But certainly, that's the intent of the language, not to, not to put an extra on the developer in this situation.
Yeah. I mean, I like the way that they wrote it and said, and they said, you know, a large city may not deny development applications, just being very intentional in that way, right? For a triplex or quadplex based on infrastructure constraints. So it's like, you're automatically allowed unless the city determines that there isn't sufficient infrastructure. So you go into a pre-application meeting, they say, hey, the city, there's not sufficient infrastructure. And then if the large city determines that, it gives the applicant the opportunity to demonstrate that they can provide it so that you're not just stopping it at that point, saying, hey, there's not sufficient infrastructure, you can't do this. You know, it's just very, what I like You can't do this. You know, it's just very, what I like about this language is very clear that you can't use this as a way to stop middle housing, and you have to give the developer an opportunity to step in. So the other language, to me, leaves it open in the sense of who has to provide this assurance? And is there any opportunity if it's not sufficient?
Yeah, Commissioner Holova, I don't see any problem with interpreting the language that Ellen Miller has provided in the way you're suggesting, suggesting. So I defer to Ethan or others if they see any problems with the change.
Yeah, Commissioner Holova and Gordon, if I could, the the concern is that the process, the quote unquote demonstration of infrastructure sufficiency, already currently, the situation for a development proposal to come to the city and review the infrastructure sufficiency is already the developer's burden to show that they're meeting city standards. The process does not change with.
Can I interrupt you for just one second? That they're meet that they're meeting city standards, I totally get, because that's within your development, right? You're meeting city standards, but a lot of these infrastructure things occur outside of your development. They're in the street, in the road. They might be down the street.
Sure, yeah. And so the the language that the home builders provide, I think, goes back to the way that we had initially proposed, where we're now describing these infrastructure constrained lands, and those are categorical exemptions or exclusions of middle housing in those areas. Even though the developer is able to show that infrastructure is provided, you start out at the baseline, because the city basically has to map out, you know, the areas that don't have the infrastructure available to accommodate those.
Oh, I didn't see it that way. I saw it as when the application comes in, the city has the opportunity to say, oh, by the way, we've realized your particular lot that you want to develop on does not have sufficient infrastructure for this lot, not that there would be this whole process where they map out. You know, I saw this as a lot by lot discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I think there is some work that needs to take place prior to that meeting, you know, the pre-application conference on the behalf of the city to basically draw that. I mean, there's some backend drawing of that map to determine where the infrastructure is sufficient. And so whether that's instilled in this language or not, that's still how it would function, at least in our mind.
To MacArthur.
Yes.
I wonder if it'd be helpful to put up Ms. Miller's suggestion for the Commissioners to just read together. Sure. To be able to refer to Esther, if you could bring that up.
And I wanted to clarify, just so I understood. I think that what the staff is saying and what Ellen's comments are saying are going, driving toward the same idea, which is that middle housing shouldn't be treated special in a negative way. It should be considered as just a part of the city that can occur. So I don't, I'm not having any issue with the intent, and I'm just questioning, does this language get us to that intent?
Esther, if you could just scroll down a bit to the red line, please. Esther, are you able to scroll, scroll, scroll just on Ellen's letter, just down to the, so the red lines show? A little bit up. Sorry.
Yes, I'm gonna try a different screen share. Just a moment.
Okay.
Thanks.
So while you're doing that, I'm thinking, I mean, yes, we all, I think all the same intent. I think you're right, Commissioner Holova, and we want to make sure the words reflect that intent. But if these words that if the draft recommendation from staff uses words that are used elsewhere in rules relative to when a developer comes to the development table and asks for permission and okay to build a unit or three units or four units or whatever. It's, I think we're talking about using semantics. It's just semantics, because it is a conversation. I've been to those counters, and I said, okay, I want to do this thing. And they say, and then they have the development, the public facility people come in, and they say, well, you don't need to expand the sidewalk. You need to do this and that and that. But there's no fatal flaws. There's enough sewer, water, whatever, to go ahead and build what you want to build. I think we're trying to duplicate that same process and not make it harder or easier to. It's the same as a single family dwelling in terms of the process. So if that's what this language does, great. If it reads differently than that, then we need to be aware of that.
Yeah, and Chair, my thing is, you know, I don't know if the term sufficient infrastructure is a term that exists outside of our conversation. So if there was a term in the single family world, let's call, let's say, call it sufficient infrastructure, and then, you know, a single family developer has to demonstrate sufficient infrastructure is provided, then I'm totally fine with this language. But if we're introducing a new term called sufficient infrastructure, it seems that would seem like we're creating something special. And then if we're creating something special, we should probably talk more about it.
On page seven of the staff report, seven and eight, staff is defining sufficient infrastructure. So the, and it's written on the bottom of the staff report. The question then is whether or not that definition is in rule that is being considered today. Staff, is your staff report definition of sufficient infrastructure in the rule draft?
Yes, yes, it is added to the definition section of Division 46.
And so do single family homes currently have to meet that definition of sufficient infrastructure?
There's no definition of sufficient infrastructure. There's, like I mentioned in the staff presentation, there's instances where a city might allow exemptions to those particular public work standards in terms of, do you have to kind of prove up the infrastructure sufficiency? But it's not a, from my knowledge, it's not a defined term.
But in practice, I guess, a person wanting to build a single family dwelling would have to prove to the, well, we have to have a conversation with the city to sit to to onto these ones you have in here, which is connection to a public sewer system, connection to a water system, access via public or private streets, blah, 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 storm drainage facility. So those things are pretty basic requirements that have to be signed off on to be able to build a family dwelling, or in this case, that we're talking about middle income housing.
Yeah, with some, you know, like I mentioned, some cities allow single family detached homes to be on well or septic or some other form of facilities.
So.
Hi. I'm sorry. Kevin Young here. I had maybe a friendly amendment to offer, if that would be helpful.
Please.
Okay, thank you. Consider possibly rewording to say, a large city shall work with an applicant for development to determine if sufficient infrastructure is provided or can be provided upon submittal. Would that address the issues?
I like it. Other Commissioners? I see Commissioner Holova giving a thumbs up. Great. I don't see any problem with that. That sounds like it's just clarifying. It's really a conversation, and then obviously, the city has to look at their pipes and everything and figure that out. And then applicant can say, well, okay, I'm gonna go ahead and give you some more money to build a pipe bigger or do whatever. So it goes both ways. I think it resolves the good points that Commissioner Holova raised. So without, we see no deviation from that. Can we include that on a screen somewhere as the final motion or something? Because we'll need to, we'll need to reference that as maybe an exhibit or something so that we can say, or consistent with the conversation when someone finally makes the motion. So second figure, the best way for us to reflect on that as the motion is being made.
Chair?
Thank you.
I wanted to add, I had, I just thought of some, I was like, why is this bothering me so much? And I just remembered. In transportation issues in the city of Portland, I've worked on projects where you have, you know, a small townhouse development, and the city basically requires you, it's at their own discretion, to do quite extensive transportation studies that, to me, are above and beyond the need of a, let's say, eight townhome development. You know, the same cost you would spend on a huge multifamily building, you gotta spend for eight townhomes. And so that's why I feel like I get a little sensitive, and I feel like any developer would be if it says that a developer should demonstrate, you know, because that requires that now you're gonna hire a consultant. Now they're gonna demonstrate. So I like the idea that it's just keeping it within. This is the normal way development happens, and not something special that you now need a whole new process for.
Got it. That makes total sense. Your experience is so helpful at this table. Thank you. Okay, so Kevin, would you read that once more, just so we have it in our heads? And then we can go on to other aspects of infrastructure as well as master plan communities. Just read it once more for us, so we.
You bet. Happy to do that. So and I'll just do that first scenario where it speaks to quadplex, triplexes and quadplexes. But the language would be the same for the other two. So it would read, a large city shall work with an applicant for development to determine if sufficient infrastructure will be provided or can be provided upon submittal of a triplex or quadplex development application.
Chair MacArthur.
I like it.
Thank you. If I could, Sean Edging is working with Kevin to type these up and have these up for your ultimate vote. So you should have them all on the screen for your ultimate vote. Thank you.
Super. Thank you. Much appreciated. Okay, I think we can go on to asking if are there, are there any concerns, modifications Commissioners would like to make on the infrastructure issue?
Chair MacArthur. I just want to make sure that we include or we discuss the League of Women Voters recommended language change to the section as well, which I think staff had also indicated their support for earlier in their letter. So that's, that's one comment. A second comment is, I, it was very helpful for Gordon to also just state that Ms. Miller's letter reflects staff's understanding and interpretation. So whatever our final language is, I think it's still helpful that we have this letter in our legislative record and for everybody's future reference, just because if that's, if this is our common understanding of what the ultimate language is, whatever it may be, this is also helpful. And then just the third point, which is just the follow on, and maybe we discuss this later today or far beyond. But when it comes to this infrastructure issue, I can't, most of us can't emphasize it enough how important it is that there's funding available for cities to update their public facilities plans to accommodate these and then to build that infrastructure. It's just so critical that the funding, you've stated it already, and we hear it all the time, that infrastructure financing funding from the planning to implementation development is so critical. Thank you.
Good points, Nick. Thank you. Can staff recite the change recommended by League of Women Voters? So those folks that don't have access to that know what we're talking about?
Yes, Chair, I certainly can. So the language that the, that exists currently, I'm gonna, maybe I can actually share my screen. Maybe that'll just be easier. Apologies. Just give me one quick second. Okay, hopefully you can all see that. This is the League of Oregon, or I'm sorry, the League of Women Voters letter. It's considering this highlighted bolded text here. So currently, the language says, following adoption of middle housing allowances by a large city, the large city shall ensure that infrastructure serving undeveloped and underdeveloped areas, and so on and so forth. Their proposed language is eliminating it or modifying it to say, shall work to ensure. And we, we think that this is an important clarification point to ensure that those middle housing types are considered in future facilities planning. So we like the second option here, which is shall work to ensure, and then continuing the sentence from there.
Okay, thank you, Ethan. Commissioners, any objection to the change recommended by the League of Women Voters? And I guess suggested as well by staff? Seeing and hearing nothing. I'll assume that we can add that to the Kevin Young list of amendments. Great. Any other, I do want to clarify, just in conversation, I'm not sure if we do anything differently in the rule, but I do want to clarify that my understanding is that when a jurisdiction updates, and they should update their public facility plans periodically to make sure they're taking into consideration changes across the city in terms of capacity of zoning, whether it's employment or, in this case, housing. But I don't believe this commission is reaching so far into local jurisdictions, planning and funding decisions to presume or to request that they prioritize this housing over others. It's obviously an important piece of it, but they have reasons, a lot of other reasons to consider and to prioritize their public facility plans. So that's my assumption in this. Well, the lack of a point in the language makes me understand that that is the way we intend it to be. And seeing no one else objected to that, we'll just keep that in sort of the legislative record, if you will, or administrative rule record in this case. Any other changes Commissioners want to see in the infrastructure language? Okay, let's go on to the master plan communities. We've heard some really good testimony. This is a hard one, because we really want to make sure this works on the ground. And we've had some pretty articulate speakers who are doing this work and creating lots of housing on the ground that is needed and pretty consistent in general with what we're trying to accomplish here. So I just want to open it up to Commissioners. Given the testimony you've heard or any other thoughts that came into your mind during that, do you have thoughts about how you want to modify the language or keep the language the same in the staff recommendation?
Chair, if I may, I just have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Warren.
So we've heard a lot about the cost difference between, say, you know, 25 units per acre to 20 to even 15. Is there any sort of standardized cost per unit acre density that we can look at? I mean, what, what is the cost difference between, say, 20 units per acre and 25 units per acre for infrastructure? Is that, is that even a known amount?
Commissioner Warren, I can try to respond to that, and Gordon and others, maybe Kevin too, can elaborate. But I think that's really a localized number, especially considering existing systems, you know, the unique circumstances in, you know, watershed area or, you know, flow area or topography. So I think it's, it's a hard number to pin down, and I think even within cities, it varies, you know, in certain areas and based on the development. But generally, I think some cities, especially in the metro, calculate the system development charges based on an equivalent equivalent unit. And so that takes into consideration the number of, you know, fixtures and drains and all of that kind of stuff to calculate those fees. Whether that covers fully the cost of the actual infrastructure depends, and there's some additional backend calculations that take place there.
Is that something we could get sort of a range on or something in a year when we do our evaluation and kind of think through how things are progressing in master planned communities? Is that, is that something we can have some articulation of?
I think so. The SDC, the system. I think so. The SDC, the system development charge on a equivalent residential unit is much easier to kind of capture, but it would take some collaboration with the individual cities to actually understand that the real cost of infrastructure on a per unit basis. But I think, but I think it's doable.
If I may, if you're going to chair, I'm not sure it's necessary for us as a commission to understand the exact number. I think maybe having a more generalized idea. So, and I know this is kind of a shot in the dark, of course, but I mean, are we talking like a massive difference in cost between 25 and 20 units per acre?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Warren, this is Gordon Howard. Our initial quick research that we put in the staff report indicated that generally, you know, attached or multifamily units had a somewhat lower rate of generation of infrastructure needs than, than single family detached units of, you know, and, but those, those, that difference, you know, may have been maybe as low as a half in some areas, it may be, you know, 80, 90% in others. So we can, we can do some more work on that as well. And then, and then local governments have a lot of different ways that they calculate SDCs as well. Some of them take those kind of things into account and some of them don't for, for convenience sake, if you will. So we, you know, certainly this is something we could look at. But, you know, I think that when you're, I mean, when you're, you're hypothetical about 20 versus 25 units per acre. If all, if the 20 is break or all single family and the 25 units per acre are all attached or multifamily, I think probably there would be an equivalent, you know, infrastructure load, but it's, you know, of course, it gets more complicated than that. So we'd have to look at that in more detail before we've reported back to you.
Yeah, and I think what's, what's become abundantly clear throughout this process is that compared to a single family detached home, a quadplex is neither 100% of the infrastructure demand, but it's also not 400% of the infrastructure demand. It's somewhere in between. And that analysis, there's some literature about it, but, you know, that could be certainly part of what we take a look at, just to try to right size what that infrastructure capacity planning looks like.
Thank you, Ethan and Gordon. Any follow up, Commissioner Warren?
Yeah, I guess this is, you know, just one of those kind of gray area things. And from my understanding, we kind of have to pass this today, if I'm not mistaken. So what I'm hearing from staff is that, you know, there's more work that needs to be done to really hone this in. And so I guess I'm just wondering, is staff comfortable with what we're being presented today? Enough so that we can pass it to start the ball rolling on this, this, you know, really important piece of rulemaking? With the intent, I guess, of coming back and, and fine tuning it as we go along? Is that kind of what I'm hearing here?
Yeah, Commissioner Warren. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Ethan.
Yeah, so the option two that staff has recommendation or recommending for master plan communities, I think, is a workable solution. The change from 15 units an acre in terms of infrastructure capacity planning in the metro to 20 units an acre is something that is something that we want to take a look at in the future. And the good thing is, between now and one year from now, the large cities' rules will not, will not quote unquote, be in effect quite at that time. So there is still opportunity for cities to make the, you know, change if we do end up tweaking the administrative rules at that point in time.
That's a really good point. I hadn't thought about that, Ethan. Thank you. Deputy Director Green.
Thank you. This recommendation, come back within a year, actually came from staff trying to decide whether to go 20 or 18, Commissioner Warren, Chair MacArthur. And we just didn't feel we had the empirical data to go to 20 and 18, but we're relatively comfortable with 15. So it's really that areas outside metro areas that we'd like to test the market feasibility. We've also had a request to include some anecdotal interviews of developers and cities to understand whether or not actually fear of local opposition is another reason that folks aren't building to higher densities, fear of kind of NIMBYism type complaints that, well, I'm going to plan to build lower than I would like, or that the market potentially could bear just because I know that it's not compatible with the historic pattern in this, you know, suburban neighborhood. So we would like to come back, but I think we are relatively comfortable today. I wonder if it'd be useful at this time to ask Ethan, Chair MacArthur, to just recap the differences between option one and option two, because it's actually not just a different in density levels, it's a fundamental different approach. Sure, if that'd be helpful.
Commissioners need, thank you, Kirsten. Commissioners need that, or are you, are you getting set in what, in where you want to go with this? I don't want to go backward if you have it in your head.
I still.
Is there anyone, is there any, and is there anyone that would like, excuse me, Ethan to go?
Well, I have a comment. Not necessarily that I, that I, that I would need the distinction, but I'm still having a hard time with figuring out something important. Okay, so the, the main issue, as I see it, is that in terms of master plan communities, you know, we want to provide access to basically communities of color. That's, that's one key element, because historically, these, you know, these master plan communities have been notorious for excluding, you know, communities of color, right? So we want to provide some sort of reassurance that master plan communities can't block the creation of, of middle, you know, of housing. And so we're trying to do that by incentivizing, you know, the type of, the number of units to, so that then, so that developers will then, in a way, be forced, or not necessarily forced, but through market mechanisms, be encouraged to still provide middle income housing in master plan communities. So that, that's kind of how I'm understanding the, the picture as it relates to equity issues and races. Am I missing something?
Yeah, so you're, Commissioner Sandoval, you're picking up on the key point here, right? Which is to open up master plan communities for middle housing development. And, you know, we, we hear a lot from city stakeholders that master plan communities are a key way that they plan for their, you know, increased population growth over a certain period of time. And then we hear from housing advocate stakeholders that say, these areas are typically, you know, zoned, either zoned or in plan for infrastructure that would preclude that development from taking place either now in that initial phase or in the future through redevelopment, conversion of existing units. And option two, which focuses just on the infrastructure planning, not on putting a cap or anything like that on, on the actual developed density, opens up or solidifies that opportunity for middle housing to be part of those master plan communities. And what we need to be sure that we don't do as part of these rules is require middle housing as part of those master plan communities. I think we can do, just as you are saying, is incentivize the development by saying, cities should accommodate this amount of infrastructure so that, you know, middle housing can easily fit within that planned infrastructure capacity.
Great. Thank you.
Chair. Chair. Sorry.
I am muted. I.
Yes. So I kind of wanted to make a broad statement, which was, you know, the comments related to the plan, master plan communities being an exemption from middle housing. And I wanted to reinforce my understanding and also what the staff has said, that I do, I don't feel that this part is about making an exemption for master plan communities. And I think the staff has taken it, you know, we've gone up and down and all around, listening to different people's comments and adjusting it. And what I like about where it is now is, instead of just saying, oh, master plan communities have issues and we need flexibility and very generic, they honed in, they said, we're talking about infrastructure. We're trying to ensure that cities don't have to overly plan for infrastructure that will never happen. What is the amount of infrastructure that they should plan for? That amount should be visionary. It shouldn't be looking so much in the past, because anything in the past was planned 10 years ago, let's say. So we have to be thinking about 10 years from now. And so it's whatever amount we find is going to be uncomfortable for somebody, right? The idea that it's visionary and it's planning for the future is going to be uncomfortable for cities. The idea that we are looking at master plan communities potentially different is going to be uncomfortable for housing advocates, partly because we are thinking about the actual, like, implementation, the, the cost, the nuances that come with greenfield development. So I don't actually see this as a compromise, like some, someone said. I don't find this like a watering down. I think this is a blend between, we have to be visionary with our numbers, but we also have to have a way that cities can practically implement this. And the practicality has more to do with the cost of housing. And so it's that tension that we're kind of on the edge. And I think the staff has done an amazing job getting us to this point. And I think it's good for us to reflect over the next year and, and, and chart and see how this is going. I, I've always said in the RAC meetings, we're going to have some problems, right? We're not, this isn't perfect. We need to be able to reflect on that. But I, I don't think this area is an area in which we're, need to revise it necessarily in the next year.
I think that's extremely well put, especially because it resonates with my thinking completely on this. So thank you, Commissioner Halaeva. I will ask other commissioners if they have a different opinion or, I guess, different opinion than where Commissioner Halaeva is, which is, let's adopt this language on master plan communities and take a look at it in a year and see if there are tweaks necessary.
I think the only thing I just wrote down that I forgot that maybe could be changed, I, I don't necessarily have a strong opinion on it, is this idea, instead of sitting, cities may, something about creating different housing types that they must allow for different housing types or something to that effect. I, the reason I say I don't have a strong opinion on it is because I would hope, but you never know, that a developer would do different housing types just to mitigate risk. But we would always, we would want that outcome to come out anyway. So maybe, maybe putting must in there is a good thing because it states our intent, which is, we do want a mix of housing. We don't want all townhomes or all, you know, quads. We want to mix. And that's good for design. That's good for longevity over market condition. You know, it's good for price points. It's good for everything. So I think that'd be the only thing that I could see shifting is that, I don't know if it's a may to a must or a shall, but I don't have the language.
Staff should comment on this, but my objection to that change is that we're trying to treat master plan community development similar to development outside of master plan communities. So when, if you as a developer, Anu Le went and wanted to do a duplex and you went to the city of Portland, they said, no, you got to do a quadplex here. It's like, well, you know, that's not what I planned right now. I might want to do that in the future. So I think we're trying to treat them in a similar way. So I, my thought is, I would not be in favor of changing it from may to must.
And Chair, I could totally go along with, with that. I guess, a question I had, just because I didn't know, that maybe somebody knows the answer to, is what is usually the smallest scale master plan community that happens with regard to units? The reason why I say that is because I think I had an opportunity at one time to do, and I don't know, it wasn't master plan. It was some, some kind of zoning that was like a master plan. And I chose not to do it because it involved a whole other set of requirements that I was like, no, I'm just going to stick with, you know, the code at that particular time. So I'm just more curious, like, what, yeah, it's not, it's not, obviously, a two-unit development is not a master plan community, usually. Does anybody have any sense?
This is Gordon. My, my thoughts are that it's, it can depend upon the, you know, how the master developer divides up, divides it up. And, but it's generally in, you know, I would say it's at least into two digits worth of units, if not more, up to maybe 50 or 100 at the most in Oregon at least. That's, that's my thoughts on it, which maybe I think are correct, so.
That would be fine, Chair, with the, staying with that, with what we have now.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Chair MacArthur, I would just offer a couple, one response to Commissioner Halaeva is that, for example, Redmond has a 10-acre provision in one of their master plan codes, but 20 acres is, is certainly, I think, more common, just given the size, scale, et cetera, of these developments. I would just, my, my comments is I've, I've, I've struggled going back and forth with option one and option two, but certainly favoring option two. And I think that's a great place for us to start right now. My, my only point would be, and we've already talked about this as well, is, is that over the course of the next year, we really think about, and we, we include Colin and, and, I'm sorry, I can't remember the name from the city of Wilsonville, I had it written down here, that we really think about how, or if there are any obstacles to, to creating new master plan communities, given the economics and the economic uncertainties, because we certainly don't want to create any unintended barriers from, from the uncertainty of these developers. It's like, well, gosh, we would go forward, but given the uncertainty, we're not going to at this point. So it'd be great if we can, if we can proceed with option two, with the understanding, we will, we will continue to look at this, we'll continue to engage them and, and consider any refinements. And it's just refinements in order to achieve the, I think it was a former chair, let's said, the solution oriented approach going forward, so that we do see maximum implementation going forward, so that it, it works for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we are ready perhaps to take, ask for motion. Katie, did you have a comment you wanted to make? I'm sorry.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I'm trying to kind of wait in line here. Just a comment to Commissioner Halaeva's comment previously. I think we're all struggling with the kind of complex set of policy here that is kind of difficult to wrap your head around a little bit. And I think making sure that we continuously go back and look at this, I think Commissioner Halaeva said, at 12 months, I mean, I would like to see actually more consistent time scales that we sit it on. So maybe, maybe every meeting, we have some type of staff report or report from cities on sort of what's happening, so that we're constantly kind of getting that feedback, feedback on how it's going as this is implemented.
Great. Good points. I think we're all sort of in the same thing you are, Commissioner. Having regular updates on all aspects of implementation of House Bill 2001 is really important for us. So I agree with that. So I think we, Commissioner Warren, did you have a comment you wanted to make before I kind of try to tee this up for a decision?
Yeah, just a quick response to the last comment. I agree. I think in a, in a perfect world, that that's, you know, we should really be doing this sort of a check-in on a month, on a, you know, a regular meeting schedule. But I also think we need to be sensitive to staff time at this point, you know, especially with the budget cuts that we've underseen, you know, recently. We, we, as a commission, I think, have to be really sensitive to applying more work to a staff that's probably got more on their plate than they can really handle properly at this point in time. So just wanted to point that out to everyone.
And Chair.
That's an excellent.
I wanted to follow, follow up on that. And also, I think, especially when, when it comes to large development, infrastructure related work, to be cognizant of the data that we receive. Because, you know, we might have data from Beaverton for a specific area. And that whole SDC question and infrastructure supply and capacity of their system and all that is very specific to, let's say, Beaverton at that moment, which would be completely different to Springfield at a different moment. And so I feel like it will take quite a while, I feel, more so for the larger master plan infrastructure issues to get data that we can say, in, well, would influence us in a greater way to change policy. So I'm, I'm actually, I think, checking in intervals and learning is important, but I would be cautious when it comes to very few data points with this issue, to not make a radical change. Versus, I think there's some other areas with, in the two housing bills that I think one could learn more rapidly and, and implement. This one, I think, will take longer to understand.
I think all these comments are helpful. What I'd like to do is to have a conversation, a start of a conversation in January, at our January meeting, so we can. a start of a conversation in January, at our January meeting, so we can uh, give housing, the folks, uh, staff a break after this. And then in January, we come back and we start to begin the conversation about what kinds of things we want to have reported back to us on, rather than kind of uh, figure that, all that out right now. Um, but I think we are all in agreement that we do want regular reports, check ins, whatever. We can determine that the parameters of that reporting in January. So um, so I, I'd like to tee up uh, maybe on the screen if we can. And I can maybe turn to Ethan or whomever is um, operating the screen to put the two, um, I think there were two amendment, amendments we talked about on the screen so that then perhaps one of my colleagues can initiate a motion.
Thanks Chair. Um, so Sean's got the language up on the screen. Um, I hope, hopefully you can see that. Maybe Sean, if you could zoom in to certain, certain parts, but um, yeah, I think I, I just wanted to kind of touch on one, uh, reiterate a, a point that Chair MacArthur made about changing the may to must in terms of the mix of middle housing. Um, I think we want to tread very lightly around requiring middle housing and master plan communities, which is not the intent of House Bill 2001. So just wanted to put a little blurb in there about that.
Thank you. So on the screen, yes.
Yeah, just to say when we, when a commissioner does make a motion, we don't need to read this entire page, correct? We can refer to this page. We can say, we can make the first part of the motion and then say, as written, um, correct?
I believe so. I, I wonder if it's safer if we label this an exhibit. Can we do that? And then we refer to the exhibit that is currently on the screen. Uh, so is, I, can somebody maybe Casaria or Steve uh, guide us in that? I want to make sure that we're all looking at the same thing and agreeing to adopt the same thing as opposed to others. What is the safest way to go on that?
Yeah, I was comfortable with the suggestion that Vice Chair Permine just made.
Great. Okay, so let's all look at the screen and um, read it through, give you a moment to read, read it through.
Yeah, can, can you give us like a couple of minutes? Just like two minutes?
Yeah, so will.
I have a tiny screen right now, so I'm just trying, trying hard to read.
And note that the um, uh, the, this, this doesn't actually have all of the text. It, it does continue on to the next page, so.
And this is intended to be all three parts that we're reviewing, all, all three parts we've discussed.
Uh, uh, yes, yes. Well, so the um, uh, alternative citing and design, that's just as written in the.
I see.
Yeah. But it does include infrastructure sufficiency, including the edits we've talked about, as well as the master plan communities option two.
Okay. I'm getting a bigger screen, surely, so.
That's awesome. I love that idea.
I would like to make the motion, Chair, when the time comes.
Great. Has everyone else had a chance to read it? Hearing no comments, I will assume you have. So Commissioner Halaeva.
Uh, I move that the Land Conservation Development Commission adopt Oregon Administrative Rule Chapter 660 Division 46, including the large cities' middle housing model code and minimum compliance standards as drafted in Attachment B and C of Agenda Item 4 with the following amendments. Uh, and the amendments uh, are referring to infrastructure sufficiency and master plan communities and will be labeled as an attachment.
A second. Uh, who was that? Vice Chair Permine seconding?
Yes.
Thank you. So we have a motion from Commissioner Halaeva, a, a second from Vice Chair Permine. Um, I, I don't think we need to have any more uh, discussion about this. So I'm gonna go right to uh, and ask her to call for the vote.
Commissioner Sandoval.
Hi.
Commissioner Warren.
Hi.
Commissioner Leelak.
Hi.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Hi.
Commissioner Halaeva.
Hi.
Vice Chair Permine.
Hi.
And Chair MacArthur.
Hi. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, everybody. Um, this is kind of a historic moment and I'm really honored to be part of it. And um, I would say it is long overdue, uh, especially in light of all the, the issues raised so articulately by uh, Mr. Alazo earlier in his presentation. But in every presentation we've had, I think it's really a long overdue thing. And I'm excited about today, but I'm also looking forward to more focus on implementation, funding, assessing how well this is working on the ground, all those sorts of things. And I'm hoping that we can have a more robust conversation about that in January. So thank you, Commissioners. Um, we do have two other agenda items. I know we expected to be done by 11:30, but um, if you can hold on just for a little bit, I want to make sure we give Commissioner, uh, Director Ru a chance to tell us a little bit about the Governor's Recommended Budget, which is appropriate because a portion of that aids to implementation in terms of getting some funding to local jurisdictions. So Director Ru, if you could um, talk to us about the Governor's Recommended Budget.
Yes, thank you. And I want to add my own congratulations to all seven of you. It was, it's great to see you all here. Uh, and congratulations for making some history. That's what we all aspire to do. Uh, I think our, our, our base uh, aspiration is to leave it better than we found it. Uh, but when you can make some real history along the way, that's kind of the topping on the cake. So thank you all for your hard work. Um, I don't know if we have any public comment, but I will not take up much time uh, doing this because we will have another chance at the January meeting. But I did want to spend just a few minutes talking about uh, the Governor's Recommended Budget. So just to be clear, um, the governor, obviously, every um, biennium proposes a budget which then goes to primarily the Ways and Means Committees of the Legislature. It, it occasionally often gets modified, but it is largely the structure and largely what we can expect to happen uh, when the legislature finally adjourns. There's a bunch of uncertainty in this coming session. We don't know exactly when it's gonna start. We don't know what the process is gonna be. We don't know how long they're going to be around. And it's all complicated uh, by huge monetary requests for fire recovery, uh, for economic and COVID recovery. And so I think there's probably an added element of uncertainty. But having said all of that, all of the, the yes buts, um, I think the headline is that uh, the Governor's Recommended Budget uh, is probably not just the best budget we could have hoped for, but even bigger than that because there were some add-ons that we did not ask for. So if we break up this into three parts, we have our base budget. And then we're, and then part two uh, is the POPs, our Policy Option Packages. And then part three, in this case, uh, there are three items uh, that we did not propose in a POP, but uh, got adds to the budget as well. So base budget. Um, we, uh, we're, we're most of the way back to uh, the so-called continuing service level. That is, the base of where we were and the current biennium largely uh, goes forward in, into the new uh, proposal. Uh, and that means that uh, three of the positions that got cut during um, the, the reductions uh, during the past year were added back. Um, and so we're, we're nearly back to whole. The POPs uh, were three in number, if you remember. Uh, the, the first one is the one that is most pertinent to today's conversation and probably uh, the most welcome positive news that we got. And that is that all six positions that were limited duration were converted to permanent. So limited duration was they were funded for one biennium uh, which uh, would have expired uh, at June 30th of 21. Uh, the Governor's proposal makes all six of those positions permanent and funds them at a full level. Uh, additionally, there's two and a half million dollars for grants to cities to implement the work that you have just uh, passed in, in this special session as well as in your main November session, specifically HB's 2001 and 3. Um, we do not have money, as some people have alluded for, for, to actually fund infrastructure development, but there are other opportunities in state and federal government to do that. And I think that cities are already probably pretty well tied in uh, to those sources. Uh, we'd love to be able to throw some money at it, but we do have two and a half million to, to, to work with the planners and make sure uh, that, as Jerry said, uh, this is solution oriented. It works on the ground and we see real change in the way uh, that cities develop. So that's, that's the first one. Um, the second one is our climate adaptation POP. Uh, Chris Shirley, who has appeared before you several times to do updates, will continue to coordinate this work. The change will be that she will do it as part of the general fund instead of being financed by federal funds from the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration. So that funding runs out at the end of June of 21, and this will pick it up. That is, it becomes a general fund obligation uh, starting July 1st of 21. Uh, additionally, uh, there is uh, about $300,000 uh, in this budget to do a vulnerability assessment. You've all heard me do my rant about how the land use system is basically uh, a continuously updated environmental impact statement for the entire state. But like the EISs, there's no specific mention of people. Um, and so when it comes to, to health, particularly of frontline communities, of, of marginalized communities, we don't have good data. And so Chris is going to start to do a vulnerability assessment on people and how they are affected, in, in most cases uh, negatively uh, by a warming world. Uh, and that will then roll directly uh, into one of the, I, I'm, I'm gonna hold off on this a little bit, but, but there's an item that we didn't ask for that we got that will sort of operationalize uh, that, that work that, that Chris will be doing uh, in the next biennium. The third POP um, is our, essentially our transportation planning work. Uh, we have it under climate mitigation. Again, very quickly, 40% of our greenhouse gas load in the state of Oregon as well is pretty much regionally and, and nationally, uh, is contributed by cars and light duty trucks. And so reducing that number, uh, that is reducing that GHG contribution by that sector of transportation is key uh, to our work on mitigation. Uh, ODOT has set aside $6 million over five years to do technical studies and scenario analysis that help us guide cities. Uh, we got a million dollars uh, to do essentially community engagement uh, and make sure that this stuff works on the ground. So there's one new position, uh, a planner two level, which is sort of a, a mid-level planner uh, to coordinate the work, but about $800,000 to work with metropolitan planning organizations as they begin to implement measures to reduce GHG. Uh, the one POP that did not get funded was um, I was, it was somewhere around a half a million dollars uh, for wildfire planning, that is defensible space and working with homeowners and particularly on the urban wildland interface. It's a lot of county work. Uh, DLCD is not a, a favored entity among many of our counties, particularly rural counties. Um, and so there will, uh, there will be a wildfire bill and the governor's gonna have one uh, in the session. Some of that work may or may not get in it, uh, but other people can do it. Forestry can do it. Uh, and it just makes it a lot easier to pass the legislation with some of our rural constituencies if DLCD is in front and center. So as long as it gets done, as long as we reduce the costs of fighting fire, because structure fires are so much more expensive than wildland fire, as long as that gets done, uh, we're perfectly willing to support uh, anybody else who will take the lead. So those are the POPs. And then the third area are those things that we did not ask for, but have been having a conversation about over the course of the last couple of months. The first is, and Carol Bovet and I had our first planning meeting on this yesterday afternoon, is incorporating the science side of Dogami, the Department of Geology and Mineral Industries, getting their science side and incorporating that into DLCD. Lots of things to be worked out. The Governor's Recommended Budget sends us nearly $5 million and seven people. Uh, to me, that's an imbalanced number. Uh, $5 million buys a lot more than seven people. But Carol got some information this morning uh, from her counterpart at Dogami. And so we are beginning the planning of bringing science capacity, both for hazards work, but also, I hope, uh, some GIS uh, people uh, to help us in our general mapping, uh, particularly of marginalized communities. And particularly, you know, we've shown you some maps in the past and we've used them where we can show one criterion at a time. We can do, we can do race, but we can't do race plus age plus education level plus income plus, and plus uh, impact by climate or environmental justice issues. Uh, and we able to, and we need to be able to do that so that we can get a full cumulative impact analysis on, on marginalized communities. And so we're continuing to make a pitch, but at a minimum, there will be seven uh, geomorphologists and hazard planners, uh, mappers rather, uh, and probably $4.9 million. Um, and lots of planning in the next little bit because that will not happen until 22. We're gonna take a year uh, to plan for this transition. In our meeting yesterday, it was pretty obvious uh, that Dogami Personnel Board and frankly stakeholders are, are suffering uh, through a process of, of recognizing that the agency is coming to an end, uh, at least as everybody has known it. So we, we have to be uh, considerate of that process and, and take it uh, as fast as we can, but recognizing that there are people who are gonna lose their jobs. There are people who are gonna lose their identities uh, for who they work with. And there certainly are constituents who depend on the services. Um, the second thing that we uh, have been talking about for a while, but frankly did not expect to get funded is $850,000 uh, for a scoping of a major rewrite of our 19 planning goals to incol- incorporate environmental and climate justice uh, into the goals. Um, and so we'll be kicking that off again, probably while we're gonna start scoping conversations early. But presuming that this passes on July 1st, we'll be putting ticket. presuming that this passes on July 1st, we'll be putting ticket, we'll put together some kind of advisory committee heavily centered on representatives of marginalized communities who will help us think about how to incorporate EJ and climate into every one of the applicable goals. It will probably be a two-step process. It's gonna take us the better part of two years to figure out what's the better approach. Do we actually change the goal, or do we write rules, enabling rules that that allow the goal work to take on an expanded mission? And then we'll do some writing and scoping, and then the actual process. The timing on this is pretty cool, potentially, because the 50th anniversary of the first passage of SB 100 will be in 23, in in May of 23, May 4th of 23, I think 12:30 PM on the 4th of May, et cetera, et cetera. But the point is that we might have a birthday present for for the program as a result of this work. And then the last is is another one that we didn't. In fact, not only did we not ask for it, but I argued against it. And we'll, and we are in the process of figuring out how to spend a million dollars on rural transportation initiatives. And we're actually writing the body of of this proposal, because it was one of those kind of last minute things that got squeezed into our budget. So we have put together a three-part proposal that I sent to Amira Streeter. I don't know when. Is today Wednesday, Monday morning, that outlines some ideas, and the three are that, as we know, options for marginalized people, whether they're elderly, people of color, whomever, in rural areas are pretty limited to ice cars and and single-family vehicles. There simply are not transit operations options in in many parts of rural Oregon, and there certainly aren't bike paths and sidewalks. And and so we need to address the mobility of urban people, particularly the more vulnerable among us. And again, we don't know how we're gonna do this. Are these gonna be planning grants? Are these going to be studies? We haven't figured it out yet, but it will be aid to rural counties, in particular, and cities to help people get around in you know, in a way that also reduces greenhouse gases. So two criteria. It has to be equity centered, and it has to show GHG reductions. The second is to really look at innovations in technology a little bit. There's a push around the country, and every time I read an article, I find a new state who is doing work on the use of hydrogen as an alternative fuel. Hydrogen, as those of you who may not have gone through organic chemistry, is made up of two hydrogen, or water is made up of two hydrogen molecules and one oxygen molecule. They're relatively easily split apart by a process known as electrolysis, and that requires an input of electricity. So if you marry hydrogen production from water to renewable energy sources, whether it's wind or solar, you can make hydrogen fuel. And it is a solar technology, a solar-based renewable technology that is green and is potentially available in rural communities. And so it's the type of thing that would be an innovation that would be focused on rural communities and also serve as an economic development stimulus, perhaps. And then the last piece, Holly Kearns, who is one of our city and favorite city and county planning directors from the city of Baker and Baker County, suggested to Kirsten not long ago that a way of incenting promoting otherwise getting alternative modes of transportation in some of our smaller rural cities and communities would be to marry it with the Main Street program, a program which revitalizes downtowns, brings some state and federal money to the game. And if we if we marry up those revitalization efforts with modes, alternative modes of getting about, then we probably have done some real good for some beleaguered communities. So that's our story on rural transportation. We'll continue to work on it, but that's my report.
Thank you, Jim. I really appreciate that. Any questions for Jim at the point?
Chair?
Yes.
I had a question, and I don't know if he says at the beginning, did you have any thoughts? That was awesome to hear about the whole budget for us, but on the governor's budget in general, like surprises. I haven't been able to read up on it yet. Like, was there any on the overall budget, considering budget constraints? I was just curious.
Yeah, I don't know that there are surprises. There certainly are subsets of the community. When I say community, I mean the population of the state who are concerned. So the governor did not include the the proposed tax on beer and wine, part of which was to go to addiction treatment services. And so there's been a little bit of concern about that. But I'm not sure that there's anybody that really saw anything that that we didn't expect. Part of the, part of the reason for that, Commissioner, is that again, we're a state that is funded almost exclusively by income tax. And as long as people are buying things, and as long as Oregon businesses are paying their tax and and individuals are paying their tax, our revenues don't go down much. And so much of the early planning, reason why we were first looking at a 20% cut budget, was because there was a very clear assumption that COVID was going to drive down revenues. It has not. It's down a little. It's down three or 4%. But but revenue projections and current revenue flowing into the state has not been hit the way that we thought it might have back in May. So there was just last week, another revenue forecast, and things are holding up.
Chair MacArthur and Director Ru, could I just add on to that real quick? I think there was some technology problems with the governor's actual press release on this. The one things that I was impressed to hear her say was that, you know, Jim just described the revenue side, but the cost side is still a bit uncovered in terms of COVID and unemployment. And so they are hoping for Governor Brown is really hoping and calling for the federal partnership to correct those, the budgetary needs. We can't do it all in the state alone. Thank you.
Yeah, she she's made it very clear that this budget needs $750 million from the feds in order to balance. If we don't get some kind of stimulus bill in the next few weeks, when the legislature convenes, that's gonna be, that's gonna be a very big hole that we'll have to address in some way.
Sure.
Yeah, and then I saw the other Katie had her hand up too, but I just want to take the opportunity to commend the staff. And obviously, with this kind of budget, it's demonstrating how much confidence the governor and the state have in the work. And as someone who's been participating, I couldn't be more proud of the work and being a part of this work. And so I just really wanna take this time, and a really tough year, to thank you all for that. And then handing it off to you, Commissioner Leelak.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you. Just my question was, and maybe I didn't understand all of it, but Dogami, all the program is being transferred in or incorporated into DLCD. Do I understand that correctly? And then if so, they have a board that they report to, I understand. Does that, do those responsibilities then shift to our commission? I've just, and maybe it's just too early to even begin that discussion. I was just curious. Thank you.
You must have been sitting in on our meeting last night. So I wasn't completely clear. Dogami gets broken up into two pieces. They they have a regulatory side, which is the the mining reclamation side. That will go to DEQ. Because much of that work is gravel, and much of our gravel work is in rivers and and stream beds and and so it's essentially a water quality issue. And so it's going to DEQ. To your, to your other point, the director of Dogami is the state geologist. It's described in statute what the duties of that person are. And the five-member board, the governing board, is also in statute. And so we obviously are going to have to have a companion policy bill that will go along with this to straighten that stuff out. But we would not expect, I wouldn't expect, and I would not advocate for a second board which deals only with the the portion of of Dogami that will be living with us.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobson. You have your hand up.
Yeah, a comment, actually two comments. The first one is just back to your very beginning of your report, Director Ru, and that it's gonna be an interesting legislative session coming up. One of the points you didn't make is that we had a lot, have a lot of new faces that were elected in and just say a comment out to you and staff that I think many of us actually know some of those new faces, even though they might be new players at the state level, so happy to make some connections with the new senator we have in my district and others, if that's helpful. And the second comment is really about Dogami, specific to the coast, and we rely on them very heavily for mapping work they do here. And so I would say despite maybe the the changes and and all of that that's coming with that, those mapping products are absolutely critical to all of us in planning and something that does need to be constantly updated with appropriate resources, because there's new data and science and modeling techniques that come in all the time. And then, of course, cities and counties and et cetera make plans based off of those maps. So there's a policy structure that sort of sits on top of the data across a lot of jurisdictions. And I'm sure you probably know that. But just a note of importance to that particular service, especially on the coast.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. The the governor's recommended budget specifically calls out the people who are working on, well, I'll just read it to you, geologic mapping statewide, coastal hazards, landslide hazards, geo-hazard statewide. All of those things are specifically covered by the staff that are outlined. I'm just being I'm trying to spread some happy dust on this and figure out a way to get more people to do more work, because I think we can justify it.
Great. Good point. Good points, everyone. Okay, well, thank you, Director Ru. Much appreciated. You're taking the time to talk about this. And just as a reminder to anyone who's listening, and I know that Jim and company can't really advocate for folks to support this in the legislature, but I will. This is only the governor's recommended budget, which is really critically important. So I'm not I'm not saying that's really a wonderful thing that she's recognizing and her office recognizes the value of your work, but we need to have lots of folks go and testify and support the budget recommendation in the legislature as well. So.
Yeah, and just a quick point. I'm sorry, go ahead, Carrera.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to say it's really exciting to hear that potentially there's gonna be a lot of work associated with the climate equity issues. And I'm particularly interested in the updating updating of the goals. So if, you know, you can count on on my assistance and however you you feel it would be useful in that regard. That's that's really exciting to hear.
Well, thank you. I think you are perfectly positioned to help us with that. And and we will be calling on you quickly and often because of a couple of the obvious things. I mean, clearly, you know the plan. You you know, the the land use plan. And you have a focus on centering marginalized communities, and that's what it's all about. So thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thanks, everyone. And I do wanna go to public comment for all those, for anyone who is waiting. So I'm gonna end this conversation, but we'll continue the conversation with Director Ru about these very important issues in January. And so this is a time for pub, oh, no, I'm seeing from Esther, there's no one that signed up. So that is wonderful. So we can we can say goodbye to each other. I just wanna thank you, thank you, thank you, commissioners, staff, anyone that's still out there listening, just, I didn't wanna shortchange the 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 accolades and the kudos for the housing effort. I just wanted to make sure I was trying to be respectful of people's time. So if any commissioners want to say anything to staff or anything on the housing issue, please do that now, just before we close the meeting.
Just remember, there are only 21 days in 2020. And the next time we get together, it'll be an all-new year. Oh, yeah, and it's only nine days to the solstice, if anybody cares.
Say, I'm not sure if I can speak for everybody, but speaking for myself, I'm really glad to see this year wrapping up, so.
Yes, very much. And don't forget to celebrate yourselves and each other, family, friends, pets, whatever turns you on. Just go ahead and celebrate in whatever way makes sense, because this is it's up to us to do that. So.
Chairman MacArthur, just just to piggyback off of your cue there, too, to, I said it in my comments about the budget, but I I can't believe the undertaking that that your housing team, our housing team, just went through, and all of the support staff and Esther and Casaria and everyone who is supporting us remotely. It has been exceptional to be a part of your team, and I'm so glad you actually get some rest. Please take that rest. And yeah, and big thanks to Commissioner Holliva, too, for all of your input and time on those important, that important work.
Ditto.
And keep those, that headband on, please.
It's really good. New meeting, so I wasn't gonna work to keep it on the entire meeting.
So tomorrow afternoon is our holiday party for staff. I think we ought to invite Chair MacArthur to join us.
Kicking off.
Got the screenshot.
Nice.
Great. Well, again, happy holidays, everyone. Take a nice, well, break, because you commissioners have gone above and beyond this year as well. We don't normally even have one special session, and you had two this year, plus a retreat. So again, thank you, thank you, thank you. And see you all in January.
Thank you.
We are adjourned.